I'll step up. I just want to make sure so I keep everybody out.
Thank you.
We'll get him a Swiss Guard uniform. Those are the coolest.
Okay, here we go. Good evening. This is to informally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Sections 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on June 16, 2021, as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023. The Yarmouth Select Board will hold a public meeting on Tuesday, December 17, 2024, at 5:00 PM, beginning with executive session, and then open to the public no sooner than 6:00 PM in the hearing room. Yarmouth Town Hall, 1146 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. 02664. The public is welcome to attend either in person or via the alternative public access provided below. And that's on the town website for anyone that is listening in. On our meeting agenda, we have executive session. The Yarmouth Select Board will consider entering into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 316 Route 28, Wastewater Eastman's, as the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public today. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Sure.
Move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we're gonna have a voice vote on that. Mark?
Aye, and I'm assuming you have declared that the public session would be contrary and have an adverse in.
She did.
I know she made reference to it, but I think she has to certify.
That I so certify that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Okay, Joyce?
Aye.
Aye.
Liz? And the Chair says aye. We are now in executive session. We will return roughly at 6:00 PM.
So Bob?
Bob, can I ask you just to timeout? I'm listening to the, I'm listening to our conversation.
So we're still live?
There's a hot, there's a hot mic somewhere. The audio is coming through. Bob, so you know this little app that we use? I'm listening to this conversation right now. I can. I'm listening to it right now on my app.
I think as chair you have that discretion.
Yeah, well, it gives us an opportunity.
I was watching a webinar on parliamentary proceedings and city council meetings. And city council presidents was never be shy about using the recess privilege. You have to figure something out. We're going into recess. We're going to sort this out so that you can consult with the manager or whoever you have to consult with. So I think that was a huge takeaway for me. So just store that away.
I'm going to sit with Barbara.
So we can't discuss. I was on the, quite honestly. It's still the town. I mean, your different voting group. We're also voting for you as the election. I mean, it's registered voters. Yeah, it only covers the north side. It only covers the west.
So how is it different issues?
I can objection because I think as Chair you have that discretion.
Yeah, well.
I was watching, I was watching a webinar on parliamentary proceedings and city council meetings.
Oh, boy.
And city council presidents was never be shy about using the recess privilege. You have to figure something out. We're going into recess. We're going to sort this out so that you can consult with the manager or whoever you have to consult with. So I think that was a huge takeaway for me. So just store that away.
I'm going to sit with our.
So we can't discuss.
Okay.
I was on the.
Cheers.
It's like the chair.
But it's a different town.
It's still the town. I mean, your different, your different voting group. We're also voting for you as. I mean, there, it's registered voters. Yeah, it only covers the north side. It only covers.
So how is it different issues?
No, it could potentially come up to us too. There's no way of knowing.
But so we talked about it. I mean, this is.
Well, I wasn't invited into that meeting, but I'm just, I'm just telling you that I heard that I was shocked because I resigned from all my other positions when I came on board because I felt that, and I know I would be willing to believe. Kelly accuses himself when it's Yarmouth business that comes up.
I will. But that's what we talked about.
Don't you think you'd have some undue influence by being on that, on Old Kings Highway? People aren't going to look at you as a select board. They're going to look at you as a select board member. They're not going to look at you as a member of the Old Kings Highway.
Well, I'm not talking about this with everybody here.
I know, I know.
So give me a shout. But I met with Bob and I'm, I mean, I'm on the Ethics Commission. I met with Bob. Value to both committees and I don't think I have to do.
We'll set up a meeting because personally I think you do.
Well, maybe.
Yeah, no, but we will, we will, we will.
And I have a question. I'm not going to do three people though.
On what?
We talked about moving this on to an agenda.
Is Tracy coming or no?
No.
She had said at the last meeting, she had a conflict and she wasn't going to be able to make the meeting.
Is she doing something fun?
To let you have a seat first and.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. Let's go with when it is. I am calling the meeting.
You may have to pull your mic closer to.
That would be helpful, wouldn't it? Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order and I'm starting with general announcements. Do we have any announcements, Bob?
No.
Okay, moving on then to public comments. If you could please step over to the podium.
Hi, John Stewart. I live at 182 Route 6A in Yarmouth Port and I'm here this evening to applaud the phenomenal efforts of, excuse me, Yarmouth Fire Department as well as the responding, first responders from the other towns who responded to the fire in the building in which our business was located, Abercote Woodworking. We were there for over 40 years and I just want to encourage all the residents of Yarmouth to support our first responders. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Wilkins, more commonly known as Bob. I am the Chairman of Yarmouth Old Kings Highway Committee. I've been on the committee since January of 2016 and Chairman since January of 2023. First of all, I'd like to take this opportunity and express my appreciation to this board for this opportunity to address you. I have a great deal of respect for this board. I have a great deal of respect for all the citizens of Yarmouth who step forward in appreciation for this town and in an effort to help this town and its citizens. And one would hope that that respect is mutual and reciprocated to Old Kings Highway. We all want the same thing, what's best for the town of Yarmouth and what's best for its local citizens. And I'm proud of our committee. In that connection, I would like to take this opportunity to clear up a persistent misperception that is in the hearts and minds of some of our citizens that Yarmouth Old Kings High Committee, Highway Committee is not conscious of and mindful and interested in the environment and climate change and that we are not pro-solar. I asked our office administrator Lisa Sherman to provide me with statistical evidence refuting that, and she has done so, and I have copies to hand out to all of you. But in essence, since 2021 into the present day, we have heard 124 applications for solar on houses and other buildings in the town, in the historic district. We have approved 114 of those 124, 92%. So let me, if I may, present you with those.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have others for any members who were present tonight who would like them. I have extra copies. So I recognize that the appointment of John is not on the agenda tonight, but nevertheless, for your consideration and deliberation, I would like to talk briefly about him. First of all.
Stewart.
For the record, John Stewart. Thank you, Fred. First of all, I think the comments he made at the outset of this meeting speak volumes of the kind, about the kind of man John is. He could have taken this opportunity to talk about his qualifications and his experience and justify his appointment to Old Kings Highway. Instead, he chose to thank the Fire Department. I think that's highly laudable. And I was asked by new committee member Elizabeth Argo to supply a resume for John. I was unable to do that because of the fire, of which I think you are all aware. John lost everything in the fire. However, I do have his talent bank form that he supplied in 2013 to become an alternate, which I happen to think also speaks volumes of John after he was not reelected to the committee. He offered to serve as an alternate. I consider that very big of you, John, and I applaud you for it. John has been of exceptional value to our committee. First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity also at this point to hand out his talent bank application to the members of the board. Appointments have historically been automatic to the Historic, Old Kings Highway Historic Committee. Volunteers are, as I'm sure you're aware, a rare breed. They're not like picking apples out of a barrel, and when you find good ones, they're to be treasured. I also want to make an observation about a comment that was made about John's qualification relative to his experience as boat building. Parenthetically, he does have extensive house building experience too, which, given the opportunity, we can speak to at a future date when it becomes relevant. But boat building historically, as I'm sure most of you realize, is very much related to house building. Same skill set, same tools, and in history, especially in the maritime history of Cape Cod, the boat builders very commonly were the house builders. So I'm going to let others speak. I don't want to monopolize the podium, but I would hope, especially given the circumstances of John's present state where he is straight out dealing with the ramifications of the fire which destroyed everything he had relative to his boat building business and his records, which is why I wasn't able to present his resume tonight, that he would be allowed sufficient time to fully document his qualifications. So I'll conclude with that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Trugradie. I reside on the Old Kings Highway in Yarmouth Port. My husband and I grew up in Massachusetts and we specifically moved to the Old Kings Highway because of the protection and preservation of the character of this area. We've watched and occasionally participated in nearly every Yarmouth Old Kings Highway Committee meeting for the past five years. In that time, I've witnessed their compromise, ability to adapt to change, patience, and accomplishments, as well as the dynamics of the group. In April of this year, upon the resignation of Richard Ventron as Architect for the Old Kings Highway Historic District Committee, I reached out to select person Doris McGurn, Dorcas McGurn, excuse me. In an email, I wrote, "I'm writing in support of John Stewart, a long-serving member of the Old Kings Highway Committee, currently an alternate. As Richard Ventron's replacement, John is uniquely qualified, not only for his experience as a contractor, but also for his years of dedication to the preservation of the Old Kings Highway District. His balanced, thoughtful approach to solutions and compromise come from years of meeting challenges as simple as changing the color of a front door to the current task of balancing preservation with the needs of climate change. John's presence and oversight would offer seamless transition to a time when many would like to undermine our long-established district. My support still stands." At the last Select Board meeting of December 10th, newly elected Board Member Ms. Argo, while still serving as an elected member of the Old Kings Highway Committee, chose for no cause to challenge and undermine her colleague, John Stewart's, excuse me, reappointment as Chair in a public forum. She diminished John Stewart's accomplishments of approximately 50 years of construction experience by referring to him as a boat builder and in direct conflict of interest and a power play suggests that the Select Board find an appropriate replacement or allow him to stay on until they do. According to the Acts of 1973, Chapter 470, this position calls for a one-year appointment for either one architect, or in the event none is available, a building contractor with no less than five years' experience in the building trades. It is not subjective. It is not open to individual interpretation or changed on the whim of someone's personal agenda. It is law. She suggests that he doesn't have the character or qualifications, yet Mr. Stewart has served over 10 years as a member of the Old Kings Highway Committee as well as other town committees, selflessly giving his time to the betterment of our community. She even referred to him as a character in the historic district, but I would offer that John brings character to our village. Mr. Stewart lives in one of the oldest houses in Yarmouth Port and through his restoration efforts of his home, received an award from our town. While serving as an elected official on both the Old Kings Highway Historic Commission and Select Board, Ms. Argo is currently acting in violation of the Yarmouth Town Charter, Section 3-1-2, which specifically states, "No selectman may hold any other elected town office." There's a reason why the charter was written that way. It puts too much power in one person's hands and you cannot serve two masters. Ms. Argo should be removed from any further involvement or discussion regarding the Old Kings Highway Committee, which includes her independent efforts to recruit Mr. Stewart's replacement. So the Select Board ends the year with one member having to publicly apologize for making a disparaging remark about voters and another, the newest member, Ms. Argo, showing up for her first meeting and taking a cheap shot to publicly undermine her colleague on another committee, a colleague who, by the way, recently lost his business on December 1st when a Yarmouth fire sparked an explosion that caused a fire to spread to Mr. Stewart's business. He lost everything. Talk about kicking a man when he's down. Ad hominem attacks are both out of order and an unseemly look for any town board. Its existence discourages those who might want to volunteer to participate in our government to make a difference. It does not bring us together or serve to improve communications. There's going to be another election in May, and I would like to point out that precinct one, which comprises a major section of the Old Kings Highway, has over 3,000 registered voters. A lot of people may have been too preoccupied during the holidays or just plain exhausted from national politics to show up this December. Maybe that won't be the case five months from now. Thank you for your time. Do you want a copy of my statement, Dorcas?
Thank you. It's in the record.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Joe Goldstein. I'm District 6. I'm here tonight to suggest to this board to propose an article on the next town meeting to use $2 million of our free cash to rebate back to the taxpayers of Yarmouth. to use $2 million of our free cash to rebate back to the taxpayers of Yarmouth for the hard work they have all done in passing numerous overrides, tax-exempt bonds. They have clearly shown their support for the town when money was needed. We've been fortunate this year to have $11 million in free cash. 3.3 million has already been allocated at our previous special town meeting. I don't think this as a gift. I think this as a payback for all the support our town and registered voters have given this town when requested. Thank you very much. I hope you'll consider it again.
Thank you.
Before I start, I'll just say, I typically really like to speak extemporaneously on issues so I can look right at you, but in this instance, I thought it important to write my notes down. I'm going to tell you. Good evening. I'm Richard Ventrone, and I was the architect appointee for the Old Kings Highway Historic District Committee, and I served from January 1st, 2023, until resigning my appointment in the first quarter of 2024. I am qualified under the Secretary of the Interior Standards and Guidelines for Archaeology and Historic Preservation Professional Qualifications, Standards for Historic Architecture, as published under the Code of Federal Regulations 36 CFR Part 61. I have over 33 years of experience as a preservation architect and have worked on preservation and documentation projects, including the White House and the Newport Mansions, where I was employed as the preservation architect for the Preservation Society of Newport County. I was the architect for the restoration of five Rhode Island lighthouses, one of which is a national historic landmark. It was I, I know it was brought up at the last meeting, it was I who recommended to select woman McGurn that Mr. Stewart would be a fitting replacement for me as the architect builder appointee on the committee. In my professional opinion, I believe that Mr. Stewart, in his capacity as a contractor employed in the building trades, had the knowledge of building technologies and comprehensive understanding of preservation, particularly as it relates to wood construction, structural systems, and detailing, to serve the committee and the interests of the town well. He has repeatedly demonstrated that I was correct in my assessment since being appointed after me. The characterization of him as a boat builder by Ms. Argo is dismissive, insulting, and betrays a lack of understanding about the complexities associated with the building trades, design, structure, and materials used in marine architecture. That material has historically been wood, the very material from which nearly every historic and new building in this town is constructed. When making appropriate design decisions on requests by applicants to the Old Kings Highway Historic District Committee to demolish or replace extant historic fabric, it is critical that the committee have a professional member that understands whether the building component can be conserved and restored rather than replaced. Most contractors want to replace historic material and advise their clients to choose that path. The work that Mr. Stewart has achieved in restoring boats and buildings, including his own important home in the village, has provided him with a knowledge base that is desperately needed on this committee. In my year-plus on the committee, I found Ms. Argo to have little genuine interest in preservation. Rather, I found her to be almost exclusively interested in solar projects, a guaranteed yes vote for any and all solar panel applicants. It was her reason for mounting her write-in bid to sit on the committee and a fact that she openly spoke to at meetings during my tenure. She was the solar person, a distinction without a difference given, as Mr. Wilkins said, the committee's approval of solar applications that exceed 90%. In my expert professional opinion, as a preservation architect, she is not at all equipped to judge Mr. Stewart's qualifications. I care about this town a great deal. It is now my home and the place I intend to live out the remainder of my life. On my commute to and from my workplace as the senior architect for the town of Barnstable, I drive down Route 6A every weekday and take great joy at the parade of historic architecture that passes before me. The more modern scale, the more modern residential neighborhoods also, such as the one in which I live, display a certain sense of scale, proportion, and design that has historically been unique to Cape Cod. A cohesive sense of place that is now in peril with the modern trend for needlessly large, generic contractor special homes that look as though they could be located anywhere. Ohio, Maryland, New York, it's all the same bland, cookie-cutter, soulless mess, and we are in danger of becoming the norm here for new homes and renovations to existing smaller homes. A feast of tepid, hulking colonials with vinyl windows and useless, shallow farmer's porches. Though I could no longer serve on the committee for personal reasons and as a point of personal indulgence for a moment, it took a lot for me to even come here tonight, but I feel that strongly about this that I have. You haven't heard from me in months because I've been very, very careful and mindful of my privacy. I felt, sorry, I'll start that again. Though I could no longer serve on the committee for personal reasons, I felt assured that a strong preservation voice would be represented in having Mr. Stewart serve in my stead. I fervently hope that this body will continue to gift, and it is a gift, do not make a mistake, the citizens of this town with the skills, knowledge, and talent that Mr. Stewart has brought to the Old Kings Highway Historic District Commission through his service as the architect builder appointee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Select Board Members, Tom Nacanello, Precinct 3. Good evening, and what a pleasure to be here tonight. First of all, I'd like to start off by thanking our water department. You may all know that the water department's been extremely busy over the last couple of weeks, months, with the high-grade construction going on. Our water department is there to pick up the pieces, and they're doing a wonderful job. So thank you to them. Second of all, Colbea Enterprises is on the agenda tonight, and as I watched that Board of Appeals hearing months ago, the presenter, Mr. Singer, the attorney, did an outstanding job with Colbea in trying to keep the commercial property on Station Avenue. In their presentation to the Board of Appeals, they had a mitigation site that they were going to try to find, and they did for nitrogen, thus allowing the old Shell station to become online again for our commercial income. As you know, you're also being presented tonight with some numbers from the Community Economic Development Committee, and you can see the numbers are dwindling. Last year, we had $580,000. This year, we have $502,000. It's very important we keep our commercial property up to snuff. We can't keep losing it. Out of the 250 miles, 250 miles worth of roadway in town, there's probably about 15 miles worth of commercial business. Extremely important that the commercial business stay viable so we can afford what we need to do in our town, and we can't. We got to put a roof on Amy Small for $2.9 million. We have an energy park that was supposed to come online, give us a half a million dollars in revenue, don't know where that is. It just seems like we're getting deeper and deeper into putting the burden on our residents. And the last thing I'd like to just to say, because it's the spirit of the season, and I'm a history buff, in the early 1800s, a religious revival spurred through the newer interest in Christmas. The holiday became popular again in the South, but it was slow to catch on in New England. In 1830, Louisiana was the first state to make Christmas a holiday. Other states followed suit, and Christmas soon became popular again. In 1856, Henry Wadsworth Longfellow wrote, "We are in transition state about Christmas here in New England. The old Puritan feeling prevents it from being a cheerful, hearty holiday, though every year makes it more so." Later in that year, in 1856, the Massachusetts Legislature finally made Christmas an official holiday, and then finally, in 1870, Ulysses S. Grant, our president, made it a national holiday. Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you, Tom.
Merry Christmas.
Do I have anyone else in the room that would like to speak?
Good evening. My name is John Grady. I live at 415 Route 6A in Yarmouth Port with my wife Lisa Grady, who has spoken earlier tonight. And I know there is a complaint before you which I can't talk about, but I'm here if you want to ask any questions about it. But on the other hand, I just want to make a brief comment after watching the tape of last week's meeting. I'm going to read it so I get it right. "In view of the self-inflicted controversies involving the two selectmen currently designated to process appointments to Old Kings Highway, it would be wise to make an exception to the assignment practice and assign this to more senior selectmen. Watching the tape of December 10th, it is apparent that Ms. Argo and Ms. Flynn have had prior communication regarding the removal of Mr. Stewart. Their uninformed opinions suggest they are not on board with the mission of the Old Kings Highway. This is of particular concern to me as a resident living in a historic home on Captain's Mile who has applied to be considered as an alternate on the Old Kings Highway Committee. I would like to feel that those who evaluate my application are competent and objective." Thank you.
Thank you. Kurt, I saw you standing up first. Kurt Sears.
Thank you, Kurt. Good evening. I'm Judith Recnagel. I live right on 408 Route 6A. Let me just say thank you to the selectmen. I know that all of you have been involved for many years for the good of our town. And I just want to reassure you that I did serve on the Old Kings Highway Committee for Yarmouth in 2016 and 2017. John Stewart was also as far back as then. As you know, that what we do is evaluate applications for certificate of appropriateness, and there are several criteria that go into that that have already been talked about, the historical value of the structure, the design, the texture, the materials, the color, the setting. John was always well-informed, and I found that I could rely on his judgment, and I don't think he would go wrong in reappointing him. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go to the other side of the town. I like to know how long a traffic light has to be broken before somebody notices it and fixes it. We're having problems with the flaggers. Everybody's told you can get access to the different places. No, you can't. They stand right in the middle of the road and dare you to run them over. There's one guy in a truck who was driving on the wrong side of the road to prevent a person from getting to their business the other day, pulled over and got in the guy's So why do we have four different places at the same time being worked on 28? Nobody can get anywhere. The patching jobs are horrible. There's another business who's had three disruptions to their business because of broken water pipes and other issues. There's another guy who has a $750 water bill because the contractor broke his irrigation system, and nobody knew it because it was just spraying water instead of going through the heads. Today, there was three different trenches open which prevented one of these people from getting to their property once again. They're running a business. They're on call, and they can't get in or out of their business, and nobody cares. They're leaving all the materials on people's lawns, their property equipment on people's lawns. I was told if they're taking people's property, they're supposed to be paying for it. I don't see anybody, I haven't heard anybody getting a check yet. So if you, if everybody thinks the sewer system is going well, it's not. And I stood up for how long and said, "This is an environmental project with economic benefit? These places are going to go out of business." People, oh, the big businessman, I don't care. Guess what? Go talk to the waiters and waitresses who aren't making any tips right now. I talked to one, they said, "Thank God we have Thanksgiving because that's the money I'm going to live on." Because I got tip well for Thanksgiving. Otherwise, they're not making any money. You got to figure out how to do this. Get on the property, disrupt it, and move on, not come back and forth three or four times. And then they show up at somebody's door and just start working. They just say, "Hey, tomorrow, Tuesday, whatever, we're going to be at your place." They don't care about anybody. So thank God, they'll hopefully be off Route 28 pretty soon at least, and maybe we can get that road back before we kill every business there is. And remember, you're going to the west side starting in the spring. This has got to be done differently.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else in the audience? On Zoom, I see Joe Glenn. You have your hand up?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
I want to echo everybody, including the last speaker who's spoken tonight, and it goes to a much larger issue, a bigger problem, and I'm going to bring up another one that happened this evening that I'm going to report to the Attorney General's Office tomorrow, a violation of open meeting law. Before the meeting started, there was a conversation between the chair and Ms. Argo within inches of Mr. Forrest and the town administrator. It was another hot mic moment, folks. The mic was on, and this goes to a problem that you are making back-room deals, back-room decisions, have conversations. I note that Tracy Post isn't there. Maybe if she was there, she might have spoken up and said, "This is a violation of open meeting law." When there's a quorum of the committee within three people, whether you're on email, in phone conversations, serial phone conversations, it constitutes a deliberation, and it's a violation of open meeting law. And it happened tonight, and then Ms. Flynn joined, came into the room, and conversations continued about upcoming agenda. And Ms. Argo, who then went to Mr. Forrest and then went to the town administrator. Okay? Now, that might not have been recorded, but I'm telling you it happened, and how would I know if I wasn't in the room? And there may have been people in the room because the video was just shown to be the members of the Select Board and the town administrator. But this is a big problem. It goes to what the last speaker is saying, because you guys are losing it. There is a recall provision in the charter. I think that we should activate it. There's no checks on our Select Board. There was no apology. I wrote a letter, and you all know it, and you all received it. I got no response back from any of you after the special town meeting on the guarded comments. Okay? Even though the Select Board member didn't admit what the guarded comments were, never said them, they were printed in the paper, and they were, everybody knew what they were because they heard them. But, you know, if, these are the guarded comments. I want to know what the unguarded comments are, and those are the ones that are happening in the back rooms. Power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. This is discouraging in all ways. I have tremendous respect, and when I first heard it, I thought it was Ms. Flynn's voice, but because the town clerk and the town moderator were there, I was picking up their microphones too, so it sounded a thing. But had I not, and I don't know if it was me, but I put that in my letter because I was upset with the town clerk. And I'm upset with the town clerk on a number of different things, including the illegal election. I think we should invalidate that election. I do not think that Ms. Argo should go on the ballot, at the top of the ballot, as a re-elected incumbent, and I don't know what the rules are on that, but that should be looked at. I think that we should look into, and I know you had an executive session, which is also a pet peeve, because it seems like things never come out of executive session, but the, you know, you had an executive session on something to do with appropriation. But the, you know, you had an executive session on something to do with appropriations. I want to know if we, if somebody pays a billion dollars to the bog because, to the bog owner because they know that that's, they're the only game in town, so they can charge whatever they want, what is the restriction on the appropriation from town meeting? I think that there should be a limit, or it should go back to town meeting. But I think when you have a special town meeting, to tell the people at the meeting that they, that this is non-binding is also improper. But I'm very disappointed in all of you. I think that we should move, I'm going to start a couple petitions in regards to them, but I want you to look at a recall provision. And the other thing is, the, we should know this. I've run for several town offices. They told me you couldn't run. The Charter says that you can't hold more than one paid position in the town. And the school committee is not a town position. The Housing Authority isn't a town position. So, and that has been adjudicated 15 years ago, but yet our selectmen are still confused about it. But I'm very disappointed, but I hope that everybody in the meeting has a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Tom Sullivan, do I see your hand up?
Hi, good evening, Madam Chair.
Hi, I can hear you, Tom.
I'd just like to follow up on something. I'm going to change the subjects tonight. I sent the Board and Town Administrator an email in regards to the Veterans Bill that was passed by the state legislature. It's called the Heroes Bill. I happened to notice that in the article I sent you is also where the Springfield Town Council just passed theirs. I'd like to know if that's going to be on the agenda for the May town meeting. It is a modification of the Chapter 59 Real Estate Exemptions. If maybe the Town Administrator can answer that.
We are in public comment, Tom? There are no responses that are made at this time?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
I got you now. All right, well, no response from the town on this? Just a very simple question.
Not at this time.
Does this have to be put in the petition article, then?
Why don't we talk about the fact that we can bring this up at a future Select Board meeting when we have it on the agenda?
Yeah, if you could. I would like to attend the meeting. There's some potential increase in veterans, to the veterans here in Yarmouth. Disabled veterans, that is. There's a difference. All right, we'll do that, Madam Chair. Then I'll watch, and I will attend that meeting if you would put on the agenda.
Thank you. Do I have anyone else with their hand up today?
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to read a three-sentence statement that might clear up some of the misinformation.
Madam Chairwoman, I would like to read a three-sentence statement that might clear up some of the misinformation. Madam Chairwoman, I would like to read a...
You're sending someone from IT to look into that. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was elected to protect the residents of Yarmouth against improper actions. That is part of my job. And I have no question, did not question Mr. Stewart's knowledge and his critical contributions to the Old Kings Highway. However, the instructions were read to you. We are to appoint an architect or a professional builder with five years' experience. Last, I grew up in Orleans. I am a Cape Codder. I worked and made movies about the Orleans Arena Theater, which is Orleans' original town hall. And I have denied five solar installations in my work to preserve the Route 6A corridor. So let's keep our facts straight, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman, for letting me make a statement.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have Colbea Enterprises LLC requests for a substitution of original credit land at 446 Station Avenue with substitute credit land on West Great Western Road.
Madam Chairman, maybe I can introduce this topic. I did have some correspondence with Attorney Singer on behalf of Colbea, and the reason for this agenda item this evening is for the purposes of communication. That there were some questions that came up at the board level following the approval of an underground petroleum storage tank license at the new, let's see, what's the name of the mini mart again?
Seasons.
Seasons. Seasons Mini Mart and Gas Station located on Station Avenue. And the questions are concerning the conditions that were placed on the license, namely that the gas station that was across the street was to be removed and maintained, one of the conditions...
Excuse me for one second. Could I please have quiet in the audience? Thank you.
One of the conditions of the license was that that property be maintained as an open site by the licensee. And since that time, there has been a change, I think, in the intentions of the applicant, and they sought to come in, meet with the Board of Selectmen, and try to clarify those intentions. And the Select Board needs to determine if, you know, that they feel that this was a condition, and at this point, it's a matter of communication. If, if the Board determines that there is a potential violation of the license, and there's not an intention to correct that, then a future action would be to hold a hearing in which to address the issue in the context of the license for underground storage, whether it should be amended or revoked. But what we had hoped to do is, questions came up. I think there's a lot of, you know, misunderstanding on behalf of the licensee and the town with respect to the conditions on that license. So we wanted to try to bring the parties together and see if those misunderstandings could be resolved before a formal hearing is sought.
Okay. Mr. Singer?
Good evening. For the record, Andrew Singer, Attorney and Dentist Board here on behalf of the applicant. With me is Jay Hall from Colbea Enterprises, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I wanted to sort of go over the history of the fuel permit license, because I think that will help. The, so back several years ago, and this started before COVID and ultimately got approved several years ago, but was only rebuilt, was only built within the last year and a half or so. There was a proposal to develop 473 Station Avenue, which is now the site of the Seasons Shell, Seasons Corner Market Shell property. Part of that project was to close both the, what was the Sunoco Station at 433 Station Avenue and the then-existing Shell at 446. So we went through many hearings with many boards, Board of Health, Board of Appeals, various ones. And ultimately, the boards, there were, it was approved by all the boards, including the Select Board. You were the last stop on this chain of very long number of permits. There were four separate parts of the redevelopment proposal that involved 446. That's the, what was the then-existing Shell Station, so the old Shell Station. There were four parts of that decision that impacted it, before we got to you, when we were at the Board of Health and the Board of Appeals. First, the Board of Appeals required a deed restriction that there be no further fuel service at the old Shell Station. Second, that the old gas storage and pumping infrastructure was to be removed. Third, that if necessary, and it was then as a placeholder, which is why we're here tonight, the site would be placed under a nitrogen aggregation restriction to meet health code requirements. And fourth, that the site would be relandscaped as per a plan approved by the Board of Appeals. And when we appeared before you in 2022 for the new fuel storage permit for 473, we presented all of the, all of what I just said to you, and you granted the license, the fuel license, referencing all of this, plus also that as required by the Board of Appeals, you wanted expressly in your decision that 446 would be relandscaped and maintained because everyone was concerned about there possibly being an eyesore, you know, if you had just a vacant lot without being used or developed. So all of the environmental conditions and improvements that were conditioned by the Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, and that we represented to you have been fully implemented. The non-coring fuel use is gone, the fuel tanks have been removed, the site is clean, and the deed restriction against future fuel storage use is recorded to registry of deeds. So that site can never be used, no matter what happens at that site, it can never be used as a fuel use again, which is what the boards all required and what we proposed. And as I noted, the landscaping was done per both Board of Appeals and this board's request. Now, as far as the nitrogen aggregation plan, and that's where I think it gets, to the Town Administrator's comment, it gets a little confusing. The, that was something separate from zoning. Zoning, the only requirement that the Board of Appeals had was that we had the deed restriction against future fuel use on the property, the old Shell Station property. Condition 1E of the Board of Appeals decision said that the petitioner shall complete the nitrogen aggregation process to deed restrict off-site open space for purposes of credit to the property prior to the new opening, the site, the new site opening. So because of the health regulations, and because that's in an aquifer, it's in the APD, that site needed the benefit of about 25,000 square feet, I think, of off-site open space. So...
I'm sorry, can you, which site?
The, well, to develop the 473, the new gas station...
Okay.
We needed about 25,000 square feet of additional area off-site to deed restrict against nitrogen introduction. And that's, hence, the nitrogen aggregation plan. It has two type levels of restrictions on it. And at that time, so Colbea had a requirement that they needed to restrict some off-site open space in the same watershed. That's very important. And they were searching for some additional land, and they actually found the land that we're here to discuss with you tonight. But the, the ability to buy it, there was, there was a death of ownership, there was probate. It took a long time for that to fall into place. And so as a placeholder, and as I said to this board back in 2022, they proposed to place the nitrogen aggregation restriction on their existing 446, the old Shell Station. And it was under the, under the provisions of the recorded nitrogen restriction documents. And as we relayed to the Board of Appeals and I relayed to this board back in 2022, the 446 land was to be not used effectively, you know, effectively not used until two things might happen. And this was in the documents themselves approved by the Board of Health. The first is if sewer comes down the road. If a sewer comes down the road, the restriction just goes away. But secondly, if substitute credit land is obtained and approved by the Board of Health. That was in, that's paragraph 10 of the credit land restriction. So at long last, earlier this year, or maybe late last year, I don't remember exactly when the deed transfer was, Colbea was able to buy this land on West Great Western Road. And they proposed to the Board of Health to restrict a portion of it. It's a large piece of land, so they proposed to restrict a portion of it as credit land and to release 446 so it could be reused in the commercial zone and protect this other land. And we went to, we appeared before the Board of Health earlier this year, as I said, and we made this proposal. Town Council had reviewed the matter before we went to the Board of Health, because we had had meetings with the Building Commissioner, with the Board of Health, with the Health Director, and with Town Council. And, well, that meeting wasn't with the Town Council. I met with Mark and Jay in Mark's office, and then they communicated with Town Council. And he concurred that a substitution was legally available to be made by the Board of Health per all of the laws in Massachusetts and the restriction document itself. So we did that, and the Board of Health approved it a few months ago. They accepted that the substitute credit land, this portion of this land on West Great Western Road, is actually better as credit land because it is surrounded by lots similarly situated in terms of location, access, and/or buildability. And in fact, the town of Yarmouth has purchased all of them for preservation. So the piece of land is a island of land unrestricted in the middle of land that the town bought to restrict. So it makes perfect sense that this would be a good place to restrict land. And as a corollary, the Board of Health accepted, and not, not a Board of Health requirement, but, but that the substitution allows 446, the old gas station, to be once again used as an active and productive, non-hazardous use in the town's retail corridor. So by releasing 446 and restricting the other land, what the Board of Health was doing is saying that we were in compliance with all the health regulations, which means we're in compliance with the Board of Appeals' decision, and that nothing else was going to change. So 446, per the Board of Health and Board of Appeals now, is saying it can be used for a conforming use under zoning. There can be no fuel use, there can be no hazardous materials use. It has to stay, the deed restriction stays. We're not asking for any changes of that whatsoever. Those are all valid. And the, so those imperp, perpetual, I guess, I said perpetuity, but perpetual restrictions last forever. The question then, so we have those documents. The Board of Health signed them, ready to be recorded, you know, amending the credit land. And if, gee, a month ago or so maybe, is when the town reached out to us to say, "Look, there's been some questions. We have, you know, we'd like to talk." And so that's, that's why we're here this evening. Any future use of 446 has to go through design review, has to go through site plan review, and if necessary, will have to go through Board of Appeals and Board of Health review. So what, what the release of 446 does in the swap that the Board of Health approved does nothing to change the permitting track of anyone, whether it's Colbea or anybody wants to develop that property. They'll have to go through all of the requirements in town. Plus, though, it cannot be hazardous. So you'll get some sort of a store, or an office, but you're not going to be, get anything that is a hazardous use. And so that's how we kind of got to where we are this evening. The question was raised when I was talking, you know, with Bob, is, you know, you used the word violation. I don't think there is any violation. I think that Colbea has done everything that they said they would do in representations to the Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, and to the Select Board. I went back and watched the video of our meeting back in 2022, and just to make sure that I said what I thought I said, and I did. So it's on the tape. And so I don't, when I, and I also looked at the, the fuel storage permit itself. So the permit itself is just, you know, the form. It's just a simple form. It doesn't have conditions in it, per se. But when I looked at, or listened to the video, and I had said expressly that the 446 land, I didn't use the word placeholder at that time, but that's what it effectively was, because I said it will be restricted until such time as either the sewer comes in or substitute credit land is followed. So that's where we are. I don't know that we need anything else from you in the sense of a hearing or anything, because I think we're in compliance. But that's why we wanted to meet tonight, share all this with you. I have copies of all the documents. It was a confusing project, the permit. It took many, many years. So I appreciate that it's still confused. As I'm sitting here listening to myself, I hear that it's still confusing. But that's where we are. If you have questions, we'd be happy to try and answer them. Did you want to say anything? You?
No, I would, you know, reiterate everything that Attorney Singer had said. When we were, prior before, before this board, and we had noted the fact that, like you said, it's either a sewer, seems unlikely, or we could find additional credit land, we were looking at that piece of property that abuts the open space of the town. We didn't know if we would get it at the time. So at the time, we kind of went along with, with the game plan as a placeholder, and then once we were able to get the property under, under control, it seemed like the natural thing to do is use that property as what essentially becomes open space so that there's not, in the retail world, they call it speed bump, in the retail corridor, where you get a break in the retail corridor, and that that property can be used again as, you know, for some reason, I always say a flower shop or, or an office or something like that. In a consistent manner, be a productive piece of property in the retail corridor for the town, and then hopefully it's a... And then, hopefully, it's a, you know, whoever buys it, we don't plan to develop it, we would sell it to a party that would redevelop it, and something that's consistent, that would have to go before planning and zoning. And hopefully be a contributing lot from a, from a commerce standpoint. It seemed like the, the natural thing to do was to swap those two out. If I can answer any questions, hopefully, it's clear, I understand, as Attorney Singer said, it does get a little confusing because there were two separate tracks that the property was being restricted on. One, sort of that zoning track, and the other being the nitrogen restriction track.
Mark, do you have any questions?
No, Madam Chair, I was against the overall project, I was, I think, the dissenting vote. But I am interested, obviously, in what's being done with the property. I think there's an understanding here that it was going to be used for green space, I think that's what the board was told. So, I'm, I'm interested in hearing more about that.
The, and, and again, when we were last before the board, and again, when we were before the board, two years ago, you're correct, you were the, the vote against. But, and I think at the time, it was based on traffic because you had recognized the possibility that this could be reutilized.
Yeah, yeah, just for, for the folks that are listening and following this meeting, yeah, but my concern is Station Ave has just become a traffic night.
Correct, yeah.
There's way too much volume, and we need to have a better plan in place to handle that. I was hoping that a lot of work could be done in that regard before we'd approve projects like this, so...
Correct, and those projects...
I'm, I'm going to be pretty consistent, I'm going to be very, very, very much cautious about approving and supporting any major development on Station Ave until we can get our, a better job at managing traffic flow.
And, and that is absolutely fine, and, and any project, as I said, that would come to reuse that property, once it's released, would have to go through all the process of review. As far as to your first comment to hear more about, about open space on that lot, we did say that as the placeholder, you know, or until the sewer or the substitute land was provided, we did say to the board, this board, that we were, as we've both said, restricting that to open space and re-landscaping it per the plan that the Board of Appeals had approved, which we did. There was an anticipation at that point that if we never got to the stage we're at now, that the building would come down at some point, and it would become just an open, an open lot. But now, you know, what we had hoped would happen, meaning finding that, the alternative open space, was successful, and so that's why, that's why we did that process with the, with the Board of Health, and now we're talking with you. So, I think we did what we, what they said they were planning on doing, separate from the concerns you did raise a couple of years ago on traffic, absolutely. But any reuse of this property will, as I said, have to go through the permits. And as well, when we were before this board, we were seeking a fuel service perm, a fuel storage permit. And so, you have a fire safe, it was a fire safety and hazards jurisdiction, that's what you guys were looking at. And then, as, and you noted it then, traffic really wasn't part of a fuel storage permit, but it was something that was looked at. What we believe with what we're proposing is that there is no, and this is where it also gets a little strange, we're discussing a fuel storage permit for a piece of property across the street, you know, it's not this property, this property is now no longer a gas station. So, we would respectfully submit that a conforming, non-hazardous reuse of 446, the old gas station in the future, has no threat to fire safety, hazard, threat to the APD, anything that would have been involved in the environmental review of issuing the gas station permit for 473 across the street. So, all legitimate issues, but we think they're separate.
No, I understand, I think when, I think some people felt more comfortable thinking it was going to be green space, that there wouldn't be any additional traffic demand. So, in terms of the utilization of this space, I don't believe there are any traffic limit, there are any sort of vehicle limitations or traffic projections for future uses of that site. Would you be willing to entertain some restrictions or some limitations?
Well, I mean, the limitations, obviously, are going to come in through the planning process, that, depending on what, what's being, maybe if it's an office or pediatrician, there's very little traffic. If it's a flower shop, there's probably a little bit more traffic associated with that because it's a retail use. But that's going to be dealt with on redevelopment, as to where the curb cuts are, how the traffic's going to flow, whether it's a right-in, right-out. It'll really be dependent on the proposed use at the time, and, and the planning board using their wisdom to say, "Okay, we're going to have to look at this, look at what the proposal is, how the traffic's going to circulate onsite, offsite."
I just raised that only because I know this is an issue that other, other Select Board members are concerned about as well. So, if, if there were some plans or proposals to limit that, that I think might be a step in the right direction. So, that, I, I put that in the interest of, again, my, I've already made up my decision, I'm, I'm pretty much over it at this point. But I do think that any steps that are made to limit, you know, excessive traffic on Station Ave, I mean, you're a property owner there. I think that, that would all be very well received.
And, and it's also going to be just the sheer, the size of the lot, the location of the lot, the uses that are allowed as a conforming use only, those will also all play roles in what kind of a plan could even be designed for that lot in the future that would then go for the town reviews. So, that all plays a role in it as well. But, thank you.
Liz, do you have any questions?
Yeah, is it next to the rail trail?
The new ga, the new...
The old one?
No, the old one is one property away.
One property away.
There's an office building between it and the parking lot. The rail trail itself is on the other side, but you have the parking lot for the rail trail, an office building, then the site.
So, it's next to the parking lot for the rail trail? Is that what you're saying?
No, well, no, the Dunkin' Donuts...
There's an office building between?
The Dunkin' Donuts, and the office building behind Dunkin' Donuts, that property wraps around the back of this piece.
Okay.
I think it's the, the other office building, which was actually, I think, the site of the old town hall back in the 1930s or 40s, I remember seeing a plan way back when, that is what touches the parking lot.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sort of with Mark, I'd like to see some kind of restriction, not from traffic viewpoint, but from that, the parking lot that serves the rail trail and the rail trail itself are, are points of interest and the tourists and the residents enjoy using those, and to have something there that would be more green space, because it really isn't green space now, that's for sure, it's what, a tree and a bush. So, would be nice to have it be more of a visual respite for, in keeping with the rail trail being so close. And I also wondered, when are the charging stations coming in?
Charging stations are on the way.
And what level will they be?
They're going to be a quick, what you would call a quick charge.
EC?
Yeah.
That, that I'm happy to hear.
The transformers went in two weeks ago.
Yeah.
And the transformers are active now.
Excellent.
The, the chargers will actually be delivered to the site, I'd hoped, next week, it looks like it's probably going to be the first week of January or the second week of January.
And it's like a charge point?
It's similar to, they're not Charge Point brand.
No, but it's, you have to have a card, and you'll...
Correct, yeah.
So, that's, I'm sort of with Mark, I wouldn't mind seeing some limitations or some expectations.
And just, just to be clear, limitations are expectations, it's a tiny lot, if it's going to be limited.
Understood.
If we were to take the building down and comply and then swap the land out, the, it would still be a marketable piece of property at that point, we could sell it, and somebody else could, could come in. It would seem a shame to do that because I think it's a, it's a cute building, it's a, as a, as a small retail shop, I think it makes a lot of sense from an environmental standpoint, I think by knocking buildings down and then rebuilding for no reason...
No, agreed with you there.
Not necessary.
I just think, I think Mark's right, that we should be looking to something that would not add to the traffic issues that we have.
And I guess one of the questions also is, and again, we're here just for communication, so I don't think there's any necessarily, I'm not sure what it is, it's just on the agenda for discussion. The question is, the legal question, I'm a lawyer, I got to bring it back to the legal question, is, you know, appreciating all the comments and all, and concerns, questions, or interests, but the question is, is, from a legal point of view, the Board of Appeals, the Board of Appeals, the Select Board granted a fuel storage permit for 473 based upon representations that the applicant made concerning 446. And based on those representations at, during the meeting, and they're on the tape, we think that it, everything's in compliance with those. So, the issues you're raising are legitimate questions, but from a legal point of view, the issue, you know, the town administrator started off by saying, "Is there a violation and we should, should we send you a cease and desist order and pull your license?", which is a pretty severe, you know, comment. And so, my question is, why? You know, you're recognizing the discussion we're having, and will continue to have, but at the end of the night, I guess it's a question of legally, where do we go?
And I guess I don't see that, Bob, but maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, if I could jump in, Madam Chair, yeah, I think in, you have to forgive, but we have new members here that were not part of this, this whole discussion, so they're trying to follow what's going on. You know, as was stated, this, our business was to handle a fuel storage tank permit. And while the, from a fuel storage and fuel management point of view, what they were proposing made a great deal of sense, because they were removing old underground storage tanks and installing new facilities. So, from that point of view, what they were doing from an, from an environmental point of view was a, an overall benefit, and I think everyone pretty much agreed on it. It was, I think, just during, during the presentation and the discussion, you heard from me in my, in my rant about excessive traffic and overdevelopment in that area. So, and I, and I made it very, very clear that I'm not sure legally I'd have much of a leg to stand on.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, I just felt that going forward with the project overall and the aggregate was a real concern. But I think there were some board members that at least voted for it, and I don't want to speak for the others that, that were here at the time, but I think there was a general sense that because there was a perception, and again, maybe it was a misperception, but there was a thought that that space was going to be green, green space with no development, I think people have been anxious to see what, what was going to happen there as the development unfolded. And then, when the lot was paved and some additional work was done on the site, then it just started raising questions here on the board. So, we, I think, and forgive me if I'm overstepping my bounds here, Madam Chair, but I think what we were interested in is just getting an update on what your plans were, what you were doing, what was going on, because I think at the end of that hearing and at the end of that deliberation, some of us were left with a different impression in terms of what was going to happen. I'm not a lawyer, I can't, you know, get into the weeds on the details here. So, I understand what you may be doing, it certainly fits within the legal parameters, you obviously have outstanding counsel, he knows, he knows his business, he knows it very, very well. So, I just want you to understand that, I think some of us came away from that meeting with a different impression in terms of what was going to happen. So, I, I appreciate you coming before the board and explaining and providing additional clarity in terms of what's going on.
And I think that's a town administrator, oh, I'm sorry, did I speak...
Let me, as another member of the board that was sitting at that meeting on 2022, I personally ended up voting in favor of it, knowing that this would end up being green space, because I had severe concerns regarding the traffic corridor along Station Avenue, and particularly how close that those properties were. You know, to know that we could offset by not having anything but green space in this property, ended up taking my vote to, in favor, where I, quite honestly, if I had known that this, we'd be sitting here two years later, I would have voted in a completely different way on that proposal that night. So, I am concerned, I appreciate your coming here tonight to explain your, your situation. I think you're hearing from us our concerns regarding the severe traffic situation. And quite honestly, congratulations, your business is turning out to be quite successful at that location, but as a result of its success, it has done exactly what unfortunately hurts us along the corridor there of Station Avenue, is it has increased traffic. So, I, I do appreciate your coming tonight and explaining. If you could go over a little bit more for me, please, the land that you have on West Great Western Road, you happened to mention that actually meets the parameters much better than the, than the land that is on Station Avenue that we're discussing.
Happy that, I think we submitted copies, the, the back of the, there's a plan that we marked, if you have a copy, that, that'll show it to you, I'm happy to bring it up if you don't have it.
We have it.
Oh, you have it, yeah, okay. That land, so what I was saying in that is that all of the land, I mean, it butts up to the Route 6 layout, so on one side it's a highway, but, but on, on the other three sides of that land, it is open space that was purchased by the town, either donated or purchased for value by the town of Yarmouth over the last many years, to be preserved. And this larger chunk of land in the middle was not, or has not. And so, it was felt that, you know, preserving, it's in the same watershed, that's all, that's required, so it's in the same sub, it's actually in the same sub watershed, the, the health regulations are very strict. So, this land meets all of the legal requirements, it is actually in an area of open space around it, not in the middle of the commercial district. And so, we felt, and the Board of Health supported it, that this was a good piece of land to restrict, or begin restricting it with pieces of it, because otherwise it's not restricted. And, and that land, they felt that this land would be better for that, that's where, what I said came from.
What's the difference in size between the two pieces of land?
Well, the, the, if you look in the plan, the, the portion we're proposing to restrict is, is on the left-hand side of it, is 25,000 square feet, so it's the same size as the 446 property.
It is.
Yes. The part, so the land itself is much bigger, it's several acres. And, but this piece of it would be restricted to begin with, would be restricted, the same as the nitrogen aggregation restriction on what was on 446, since, before the Board of Health voted to amend it, and it's the same size, so it's like for like.
Can you, can you...
Excuse me one sec. And does that mean that, you were saying that all around it is open space, so is there a portion of this that's not going to be nitrogen restricted that is not open space? Or is that...
Yes and no, it is open space in the sense that it's not developed, but, but there is a portion that will not be under nitrogen restriction at this point, there is a thinking by Colbia that if there are others that, in the future, that need credit land, this is a perfect site to continue restricting until ultimately the whole piece is nitrogen restricted. But what we're proposing right now is that that left-hand swath, the 25,000 square feet, would be put under the restriction.
And what portion of that would not be under the restriction?
The remainder of the lot.
And how much would that be?
Much, I mean, if you look at the plan, it, I can't tell you the size, but it's much bigger. Because it's everything to the right of that, like, if you, this would be the restricted part, so this would be the part that's still unrestricted. So, it's obviously larger.
Yeah. Okay. Liz, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, for clarification, is it the, the rectangle in the middle that you're preserving?
No, may I approach?
Yes. Oops.
So, this is the piece of land, and that's the part that will be currently restricted, yes.
It's a little sliver.
Correct. Well, that little sliver is, it's a big piece of land, so it's 25,000 square feet, but yes. Thank you. Little sliver's larger than my house lot, but...
But it's...
And it's not actually, I saw what you just, it's actually not that narrow because it's...
It's perspective.
It's a big piece, it's a perspective of it, yes. But it is 25,000 square feet.
Joyce, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, as somebody who wasn't on the board when you were here before, and who was watching this from the back of the room, I, I confess that when I heard open space and thought of our, the way we use that in the town with the open space committee, that it was going to be something other than the paved concrete lot. Now, I've realized with this trade, you know, that, that the other property would be under a valued restriction, but if the trade were made, how are you planning to leave the lot at 446?
Well, the, it, it, once we do the trade, we'll likely market the lot at 446, and anybody who wants to come in and redevelop it would have to go through planning, go through zoning, and the resulting approvals would determine how that lot is left.
Yes, I, I understand that part, I meant until it has a new owner.
Until it has a new owner, we would, we would have the lot as it, as you see it now, because we've already got the nitrogen...
Station and the concrete.
Correct. And that, that was the plan approved by the Board of Appeals, you know, so, so what is out there, they did, they did exactly what the Board of Appeals required them to do, so they're in compliance with the ZBA. And then, in talking with this board, it was, if it got to the point where it was going to be, the building someday was coming down, and it was going to be, I guess, what you were thinking of quote-unquote, "open space" as, from an open space committee point of view, then it would, you know, that, the building would be removed, and probably the pavement someday would be removed. But, the idea... But the idea right now is that with the release that the Board of Health, Board of Health approved, that it would stay as it is right now, and then as, as Mr. Hall said, once a new potential owner came in and permitted whatever, it would be whatever was on that plan. And that plan, I assume, would have, well, would, it would have landscaping, whatever a plan would have for a commercial development. But I don't, but it would stay as it is for now.
Okay, so it would stay exactly as it is if there were a trade until, I'm talking about 446, stay exactly as it is right now if there were a trade until it's rented or sold to a new owner?
That is correct. Or rented's a good, yeah, or until it was rented, that's, that's a fair statement, yes.
Does anyone have any other questions? Liz?
No, sir, no. Nope.
Okay. We appreciate your coming before us, we'll kind of.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next item we have on our agenda is the Community and Economic Development Committee, special event funding recommendations, an update for calendar year 2025, and review of fiscal year 2026, allocations for annual town meeting article. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney.
I think it's the same. I think it is the same, that's good, just in case, we have two.
Good evening.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm Courtney Butler, for those of you who I haven't met yet, I'm the Chair of the Community and Economic Development Committee, or CEDC, as we like to keep it short. So I'm here tonight to present on a couple of items. The first is the 2025 Special Event Awards. So the committee is charged with utilizing some of our tourism revenue preservation funds to support special events in town. And every year we put out a request for, thank you, Bob, request for any proposals. This year we had five total, which is less than we've had in years past, but we have allocated, of the 140,000 that we put out to the public, we have allocated 63,875, and that is this first slide here. So I'll just briefly touch on each of the projects. The first project is the Cape Community Orchestra. Susan came and presented to us, and they are looking for a new event space as they are growing out of their current space in Harwich. And so they are coming to the new Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate Middle School, and that increased costs for marketing to advertise their new location, as well as event use fees from the school, is the request, so we funded them in the amount of $4,700. The next applicant is one that is very familiar to us, the Yarmouth Seaside Festival, and Jan, they have requested $35,000, which we're giving them for performers and entertainment for the 2025 Seaside Festival. Next is the YD Red Sox, another applicant that has come before us a few times. This year they are asking for marketing costs with a heavy focus on the All-Star Game. The 2025 Cape Cod Baseball League All-Star Game will be held in Yarmouth, and that is huge news, we're very excited for that program, and to see what it does for the Town of Yarmouth during that part of the summer. It is a on-season, in-season event, but we're super excited to see where this takes the town and all that Paul and his team plan to do for the YD Red Sox. Next, another familiar face is Bob at Taylor Bray Farm. This is for marketing for their events, they do a few events a year, including their sheep shearing festival in the spring, as well as their fall festival, and other events that they hold at the farm throughout the year. And our final applicant was the Yarmouth Town Libraries. This is a brand-new application for us, and we were thrilled to see Mindy and Jane come before us. I just want to give a big shout out to Mindy and Jane at the libraries, they are enthusiastic for their jobs, they are excited to provide a vast array of services for the community, from young readers to older readers and everybody in between, and we're very lucky to have them. So I just wanted to give them a kudos and thank them for coming up with this request for us. So for $9,175, we are helping to support their Level Up at Your Library Summer Reading Program, which features the Level Up Renaissance Fair. And I do believe that this program is one, is one of five throughout the whole country that was selected for participation at this nationwide event. So that totals our $63,875 for our 2025 special events. As I indicated, these applications came in less than last year, we typically had anywhere from six to 10 applications. So we have voted at our November meeting to reopen the process in 2025 for calendar year 25 events, and we have $127,000 available for that, so we will be putting out a request for proposals in the new year.
Great. Any questions from the board?
I have one question. Where is the Renaissance Fair Summer Reading Program Level Up to be held? Do we know that, or is that not something that would be?
I think it's, I think it's at the Yarmouth.
Within the library?
At the library, yeah, they'll have more information on that.
Just curious.
I believe it's at the library itself, yeah.
Since we have three.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, do you have any questions?
Sure. I would agree with your, your assessment that Jane and Mindy are terrific, and it's great that they're, they're coming up with this proposal. What exactly is the $9,175 going to be spent on?
Oh, Mindy's actually online.
Did you hear that, Mindy?
She has her hand raised.
Go ahead, Mindy. Can you hear us?
Hi, Mark, hi, select boards, yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Wonderful. So the main funding will go towards the Mini Renaissance Fair, which is the first type for the Clams Library System, which we already have commitment from several other libraries to help host the event. So the main funding will go to getting performers to make this a Cape-wide event that will generate lots of visitors and participation that first weekend in July. And as for where the location will be held, we have two options. I am filling out the form currently to use the Maticus property, and if that is available, we would like to use that, if not, we will be hosting it at West Yarmouth Library on the lawn there, and seeking participation with community members in that area to help expand onto their spaces.
Awesome.
Great. Anyone have any questions for Mindy?
No, I think it sounds very good.
Thank you.
Fabulous, Wendy Mindy, we're going to look forward to that one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Courtney, and because it's in my mind, I suspect it's probably in a lot of other people's minds, too. Now, what now is the permanent track of funding for the St. Patrick's Day Festival Parade and all the things that wrap around that? I believe it was an administrative a year ago?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that, is that, what, one of the issues that we faced is, obviously with the growth that we're trying to stimulate for all of our community events, there's only, you know, so much funding available, and so the Select Board made the decision in the budget to create another fund that would help some of the costs associated with community events that couldn't be funded through the CEDC's Tourism Fund, and so far we were able to place enough in that line item to fund this year's St. Patrick's Day Parade, and the St. Patrick's Day Parade organizers had agreed that they would keep the parade going for another three years. And what we do hope to do is in the future, if funds become available, we'd like to expand that, to have it be a community-wide fund that could also supplement potentially some of the public safety costs associated with other events in town. But so far, what we've been able to do, you know, working with a partnership between the town, the parade, CEDC, is we've taken the St. Patrick's Day Parade, we're funding that out of the Special Events Fund under the Select Board budget, and that frees up the CEDC to tackle some new community events and things such as the summer reading and other programs.
Nice, okay, well, thank you, that's, that's very helpful. Good luck with all this, it sounds like Yarmouth has all sorts of exciting things going on almost every month.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Courtney, and you're going on to?
Yes.
And the board should also approve the grant awards.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Thank you, appreciate your support. So yeah, next moving on to the FY26 Tourism Revenue Fund, proposed allocations, we're kind of trying to get a little bit ahead of the game here, as this will eventually end up being a warrant article, as it is every year, to talk about our budget. So this year, our total allocation that we received for FY26 is $520,936, and this is approximately 5% less than FY25. So we have taken our, sort of, we call them our buckets, and we've taken the $520,000 and divided that up into the buckets. Typically, I just want to note, we have the personnel line item, there is zero, typically we've committed $15,000 to that in the past, but with the vacancy of the Economic Development Program Manager, we decided to shift those funds around until we know what's sort of happening there, and that position is filled, as we wanted to allocate those funds to other projects. So special events, this past year, we, we put out that we had over $140,000, we're just trying to keep with that same theme with $135,000 in FY26. Marketing, so marketing is cover, is the cost that's allocated to cover the cost of the services that we put out to a competitive bid to market the town, the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce is currently holding that bid to carry out the marketing and visitor services, and these will be rebid in FY26. So we are going to start working on that in the new year. The current marketing contract is for $191,655, and that, that contract includes online marketing, traditional marketing, visitor services, such as managing the Yarmouth Visitor Center, and events, as well as a flat service delivery fee. So for the FY26, we have put the contract at $200,000, just because we don't know what the bids are going to come in at, but given that it's been a few years and inflation and all that, we want it to be safe. Our next bucket is the Public Improvements, and that is a proposal that we put out to town staff and departments to work on fiscal improvements in town. We are allocating $135,936 to that. This represents 26% of the appropriation, and we are required to allocate at least 20%. So we are allocating 26% this year. Some recent uses of this fund include a 5% match to the Municipal Fiber Grant Program Application that was submitted by the town, and we are excited to see what sort of projects town staff bring to us in the coming months as we enter 2025. And our last is the Economic Development Projects, which we are putting at $50,000. These are for economic development projects related to efforts that help diversify and grow our year-round economy, and we work with town administration on a lot of these projects. So that brings our total allocation to $520,936 for FY26.
Any questions, Mark?
Yeah, the, the change in the amount of funding available, jog my memory, why is there such a significant reduction? Maybe Karen can help with that.
There's been a slight reduction in the rooms tax over the last couple of years. So I think that rooms tax revenue, the, the way that the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund is calculated is a formula, and it's a formula based on the prior year's rooms tax receipts, and don't forget, we also have the short-term rental tax that's been, piece of it has come out of this allocation.
Yes, so we made, we made, we made an amendment to the overall.
That's correct, in '22.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, I'm having a senior moment here, so I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. The, is the Public Improvement Bucket the one that we're using to do the interpretive signs on the historic?
Yes.
Okay. Historic Yarmouth, this whole initiative that we've been talking, okay, that's good, just wanted to get clarity on that.
And, and as well as the Revolutionary War markers that are going in at the ancient cemetery, and CEDC also provided $25,000 towards the design of the monument project, which I think Bob was here, Bob Kelly and David Giancopolis were here last week.
Yep, no, that's all seems to be going well, no. Just as an observation, I, I like to, I like this dialogue, I see Joe Manning is here, I love it when you, Courtney, or whoever's chairing, but it's great to see you folks come here and have a dialogue so that we can have an open exchange. There's so many committees that we have that are working incredibly hard, but I think your committee is one in which, I think, just given the nature of the fund and the work that you're doing, is important for us to have a regular dialogue and regular communication about the work that you're doing, because I think our input, our guidance, the work that, the insights that we can provide you, I think, are incredibly helpful to the, your group. So I like the frequency of our interactions, and it, once again, it's great to see you and other members of the committee coming here tonight to talk about some of the great work that you're doing. So I, does this require a vote or anything else, are we done voting tonight?
This allocation is what the committee would be recommending you move forward for the warrant.
So we'll have another crack at it later on?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's great. No, my questions are done, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz?
No, no questions, we are going to go over the Tourism Fund still.
And Joyce?
I'd just love to hear an example of the Public Improvement use. You mentioned historical, and I'm always interested in that.
Yeah, do you want me to jump in? So, yeah, in past years, we've helped cover some of the costs at the Parker's River Bridge, we paid for lights that were probably more decorative than would have been covered through the other costs. The Sandy Pond Playground and Splash Pad, the physical improvements funds were used to kind of finish off the restroom side of things there. Invasive Species Management, some of the roadway banners that you see up and down Route 28. Improvements at the drive-in site, the, the old utility boxes that are all wrapped with beautiful pictures and scenes from Yarmouth and Yarmouth's history, those were funded through the physical improvements. And, let's see, way back, Packet Landing, part of Packet Landing and the beautiful pavilion that's there. I think CEDC at that time, this is going way back, provided the seed money and then worked together with CPA. So what's, what's really nice is some of the projects Mark was asking about, we're really moving towards coupling the town funds to accomplish nice things. And so like Courtney said, hopefully we'll get some good feedback from town departments. I know I have a couple ideas.
Could you give us like a tiny peek into one use of the fiscal 2026 funds, what, something you're considering?
Yeah, nothing has officially come to us yet, but we're interested in Chase Brooks Park and a couple of other sites in town that are deeply in need of some love.
So we, we let, when we put out the announcement recently for the Public Improvements, we have an on-hand balance of funds that are available right now, but we also know that an additional $135,936 will come online in July, once we get the appropriation, and those funds are available for things as well. So things, you know, people, people in the past who have asked questions are Department of Natural Resources, they're certainly doing a lot of nice things out and about. Our friends in DPW sometimes like to dress up things, the Chase Brook Park for sure will be coming forward.
Okay, well, beauty's good. Thank you.
It is.
I'd also like to lend my words to Mark's, that thank you very much, you're a committee that works very devotedly to us, and you're giving of a lot of your time, and we appreciate it, and we appreciate your coming forward, because communication is a key element on both sides, I'm sure, you know, if there's any information that we can share with you at any time, please let us know, because we'd be happy to. So moving on to the Tourism Fund?
Yep, so this is just pretty much a projection of what the balances would look like come FY26, July 1, with what we currently have in our, in our line items, and then what we project to get in 2026. So just to kind of give you a taste of what we have right now, and what we're hoping to add and focus on in the future.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Look forward to talking to you later.
Yes. We'll be seeing each other again, thank you.
If I could also, just to the, point to the public, a little clarification, when Joyce was asking about the St. Patrick's Day Parade, and Bob was answering, I'd remind folks that were at our town meeting back in April, that this was an item that was marked in the budget as selectmen, $50,000, the. in the budget as selectmen, $50,000, that caused some confusion. And I'm, I do believe, Bob, that we're going to have that better highlighted in this coming year's budget so that folks will see your selectmen aren't getting any kind of raise there. I mean, it is money that's going toward the parade. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, we have the wastewater update.
Yes, good evening. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director, and I'm joined by Lori Rizalar, Water and Wastewater Superintendent. So this is a similar format to, we've given previous updates. I think it covers all of the, the high points that's needed to update the board. But just an overview of what we'll cover, we'll talk about the groundwater discharge permit. We have ongoing discussions with DEP kind of about what that looks like going forward. We'll talk about the Water Resource Recovery Facility, that's Contract One, that's also what we've referred to as the treatment facility, a major part of the contracts, a very important item. And then we'll talk about Collection System Contracts 2 through 6. And always wrap up with wastewater communications, how people can find out more information and how we're communicating some of the changes out to the public. Groundwater discharge permit, this is something we gave you an update on last time, that we actually do have a final groundwater discharge permit that's been issued by DEP for 370,000 gallons per day for 99 Buck Island Road. But as we talked about previously, that's only a portion of what we need for Phase 1. So we're having ongoing discussions with DEP on a monthly basis with regards to where we can find that extra flow for Phase 1. And I'm happy to report that we have progress being made towards the remainder of that flow being handled at Bayberry Hills. I know we've referred to that as a location for a possible, you know, future location, the next area we're going to explore. We met as recently as today with Scott Gilmore and CDM Smith to talk about the different possibilities there. And it's very promising based upon the volume that they use for irrigation, that we can use the reclaimed water there for that purpose for several hundred thousand gallons. These numbers still need to be worked out. But then there's also a fairly significant amount of subsurface discharge that can happen there as well. We're looking at something on the order of a million gallons a day up at that facility. So that will get us where we need to be for the first phase and maybe even a portion into the second phase. But all those numbers still need to be worked, and we will be able to do that with those ongoing discussions with DEP. So we're having some success. I can't say that we have our full solution yet, but we are making progress. Ultimately, we will need to look at other, I should mention, it's the last bullet on this slide here, we will need to look at other locations as well. We're talking about a very large eight-phase wastewater plan, but we're making progress with where we need to go. And as I mentioned last time, when we're talking about the flows, it's important to remind people it's going to take time for us to get there. We have a collection system going in now, and we'll give some dates and some upcoming slides about how that process is going to unfold with regards to some dates and milestones that are coming up. But we won't be seeing first flows into a treatment facility probably till early 2027. So we have some time to get there, but we do need to continue to make progress on finding locations for discharge. Also, we'd like to give an overview of where we are for the contracts before we get into the details of each particular one. I referenced in the overview that we're going to talk about Contract One, that's in the middle of the screen, that's that green box, that's the treatment location. And then the other five contracts are all spread throughout Route 28, Old Main Street, South Shore. That, that hasn't changed. But does, it's a good slide for reference purposes. If we need to go back to answer any questions, this is a good slide to demonstrate where the contracts are and where work is unfolding. Currently, Contracts 2 and 3 is where the active construction is occurring today. The Water Resource Recovery Facility, this is Contract 1. The Notice to Proceed, so we updated you last time that we had a signed contract, the Notice to Proceed is the next step that was issued to CH Nickerson on November 25. The construction time in the contract is 1,000 days. So that's approximately two years, eight months. And in doing the math, that gets us to a final completion on September 10, 2027. Now, a lot can happen between now and then on a nearly $100 million component of the project. But if everything stays on track, that is the contract duration and when we expect to have that completed. Then we have to go with startup and testing from DEP. There's some clear water tests that happen before you can even receive your first flows. So that's why I mentioned before that, you know, it's, 2027 is a good target at this point, but that is a moving target still. As we get closer and we have more updates to you, we'll have a, you know, lock that in better as you get closer to those dates.
I like your use of 1,000 days to give us a sense not to be hurrying, you know, because it's going to take a while.
1,000 days and nights.
Can you explain why it takes so long to get this project constructed? It's a long time.
Yeah, that is a great question. It's a long time. There's a lot of components to it. There's a lot of concrete. There's a lot of excavation that happens. There's infiltration beds. I don't know that we have a slide that kind of shows the overall magnitude of this, but it's a very large project.
Yeah, maybe at the next update, you know, we do these, we do these updates regularly. And maybe at the next update, we can talk more about that. Because it just, 1,000 days is a, is a long, long time.
It is a long time. It is longer than the Collection System Contract. So this is kind of that, you know, critical path, if you will, to get to where we're going. We'll certainly work with the contractor to try to expedite that. But I will tell you that during the bidding process, this 1,000 days is what we heard from multiple contractors saying they needed in order to accomplish the work. There's just so many steps. Long lead times tend to be with electrical components. There's a lot of complex electrical components associated with this. We have a, kind of a little bit of a side, we have a generator project with the police station that has a very long lead time just for a generator. And this has many more advanced, high-tech electrical components associated with that. So it's just a lengthy process. Treatment facility of this magnitude is, you know, the biggest project that certainly DPW will ever do. We've done some smaller water treatment facilities, but this is a massive undertaking.
May I ask, when you say construction time, are we talking to, are we talking that in 1,000 days, it'll be operable?
It'll be ready to receive flow. That's, that's correct. On big projects like this, there's likely to be punch lists and things that need to be finished up. And that's why we're going to work with a contractor to speed that up. And substantial completion of this project could be, you know, in advance of that. But there will be significant components. What you're seeing on the screen here is really just the process building. There's a lot that goes into that for controls, employee facilities, a lab, things like that. But there are a number of buildings that are part of this, large tankage. Again, we can probably show on our next update a, a larger scale, you know, map or plan of what that looks like. On some of the previous updates, we've had that. But it's a major facility. If there's no other questions on the treatment side of things, we'll switch over to the Collection System Contracts and updates with that.
Okay. So I'm just going to start with Contracts 2 and 3, which are the two that are under construction right now. So Contract 2 is the Robert B. Hour contract. And just to give you a kind of an update of where they're going to be at over the next few weeks. So actually, this, this week, right? Yeah. This week, they are on, where they've been for the last few months on Route 28, both near the Pancake Man and near this, right now, the State Police Barracks. And they're not going to be working on Route 28 next week, except for on Monday, in the following week. So they're going to move over to Mill Lane. They have some work to do over there, which is closer to Bass, yeah, Bass River Bridge, some of the side roads over there. So they won't be working on Route 28 over the Christmas holiday.
They're taking the Christmas holiday to stop construction?
They won't be working at, on Route 28, but they will be working.
Okay.
That's just Robert, that's just Robert B. Hour. As for Rivoli, right now, they're working on, on Route 28 between Seaview and Pine Grove, both doing the water main and putting in the long side sewer laterals, as well as they're on South Shore Drive near Red Jacket and South Shore Drive near Parker's River Beach. So they have four or five crews out there right now doing that work. And though it is, I know, a lot of, a lot going on on the roads right now, Rivoli is not working for the next two weeks, starting on Monday. So we have two weeks reprieve from all of the detours on Route 28. So I just did want to touch base on, I know there was the public comment earlier about the traffic. It is a lot going on right there, right now. Part of the challenge is that what Rivoli's doing on Route 28 right now is the long side laterals. They have to cross the street to get the sewer laterals to the properties on the south side. And really, the only way to do that is to close the road. And that's a, that's a tough detour. You have to go up Forest Road and down Winslow Gray. Right now, we have eastbound traffic going south, north, westbound traffic going north to try and keep them from crossing each other at turns. So hopefully, that's working out. But at the same time, we have the Robert Hour detours, which I know is confusing for everyone. We have made some adjustments to, after we've got some comments from residents. So some of the signage, particularly on Long Pond Drive, was confusing people. So we've adjusted that. And then, as well as, as Kurt mentioned, some of the flaggers have not been guiding people to the businesses. So we have spoken to Mike Bryant, who's the lieutenant at the police department that runs the detail, details. And he made sure that every morning, the OIC, the officer in charge of the flaggers lets them know where exactly Rivoli and Robert Hour are working and that, to help them to be able to guide people to the businesses that are open. There actually aren't that many that are open, but some businesses are open, and they need to be able to get there. So they've been better trained since Monday. I know there were some issues on Monday. Since then, to allow people to get where they need to go.
Thank you for letting us know that that's been addressed. That's great.
So I know there's still going to be challenges because you still can arrive and not know where to go. People do need to just ask. If you don't know where to go, it's probably the easiest, ask a flagger how to get to where you need to go. The other thing is, I am, I do update Waze every morning with exactly where they're working, so that if you do follow Waze, it should guide you to where you want to go. The way Waze works, though, you have to close sections of roads. So it may take you close, but it may not take you all the way if your business is right at where it's closed. But it should get you to at least come in from the right direction, hopefully. So I still really encourage people to try and use Waze. I am updating it every day.
Is there a hotline that people call when they find that they are, the traffic pattern just isn't working? Or is there, or they just reach out to you? How do people?
There, there's people calling, I think they make a call to police. That would, that's actually ideal, because police are the ones that, Mike Bryant at the police is the one that's helping to set up all the detours and arranges all the flaggers and detail officers. But a lot of people call my office or Jeff's office.
Okay.
So wherever they call, we get, we're getting the message, and we're trying to make adjustments to help people get where they need to go.
You can make feedback through the Waze app as well, too. So that's an interactive app.
Yeah.
So people can look on their phone?
Yes.
Okay, that sounds great. I think a lot of people probably don't know that. So if you could kind of just mention that again, very loudly for the audience at home, I think that might be helpful.
And it's on the website, I'm pretty sure. It's right front and center on the website.
It will end with that as well, because we have some information on communicating and updating the public.
And I guess the other piece of information we just want to convey is that you got to remember, we can't work on Route 28 in the summer. So we have to work on it now. And businesses don't want us working on the shoulder seasons either. So it leaves us the winter. But then we can run into weather problems in the winter. And MAST DOT requires that we pave every day. Asphalt plants are only open one or two days a week. So it just makes it challenging to work in the winter. So though it's kind of chaos right now, the, the hope is that by doing a lot right now, we'll be doing less in the spring when I know a lot of businesses don't want us on Route 28. And the other thing I've mentioned before, but just want to mention again, is that we're also installing water all along Route 28, replacing the water lines. So each contractor has to go by doing the sewer main, which is going to be your most disruptive. Then they're going to put in the sewer surfaces, which is when they have to cross the roads. And they have to put in the water. And then eventually, they have to tie in the water to every service. So it is a lot of going back and forth in front of a particular property. There's not a good way around it. Those steps kind of have to happen in that order. In particular, the water, the line has to be installed and then tested, disinfected before anyone can connect. So you kind of have to do the whole thing before you can go back. So I just wanted to convey those challenges that we're facing. And that's kind of why it is the way it is right now.
It's why people, it's why people are so frustrated.
Right.
Really?
Yes.
It's the back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. When they think it's over, it's not, and they're coming back. I'll save my comments to the.
And then just to give you a scale of what we're working with, this manhole right here that you're looking at, that's one of the ones, the second one up from the Pancake Man. So it's 20 feet deep, and that's a 30-inch pipe coming out the bottom. And each, for each manhole and each stick of pipe they have to put in, they build this structure around it. So it takes a long time, and they're paving every day. So it's a slow process. But they're moving, you know, we're trying to get as much as we can get done now in the winter as we can.
Lori, what was this, this hole for? This, it's a?
It's a manhole.
Yeah, sewer manhole.
So it's the water pipe on the right and then the sewer pipe on the left?
So the big, big cylinder is the manhole. The pipe next to it is just a de-watering pump sleeve. And then the actual sewer main is the green pipe at the bottom.
Okay.
That will continue on. This is before the actual pipe was installed.
Gotcha. So this is what Holmes will tie into?
They'll tie into the green pipe.
Okay. Well, yeah, but, so what, and this is for maintenance, these, these manholes, then?
Yeah, access to the, to the main.
All right.
And this is just an overview of where we're at with Contracts 2 and 3. Contract 2 is about 72% done, and that's just counting, I'm just talking about sewer main. And then Contract 3 is at about 43%. Contract, the contracts divide right at Skull Island. So everything to the right of kind of that little intersection in the middle, right in the middle, is Contract 2, and everything to the left is Contract 3. So they're making progress. Moving on. Contract 4. This is actually under contract with Robert, Robert B. Hour. We have received a schedule from them. They plan to start working on it in the March timeframe. They would also, they also have a section on Route 28 that they want to try and get done as soon as possible. And then they have the north-south, Old Main, North Main, and Station Ave, little, just small areas to stay within the MAST DOT project that's coming later. Contract 5 is from Bass, Parker's River Bridge to Higgins-Kroll Road. That bid we received in Robert B. Hour was the low. And Contract 6 is from Higgins-Kroll Road to Barnstable. And that bid was, the low bid there was dig at construction.
Lori, I have a question about Contract 4. Now, with the map, do we assume everything north of the map here is Contract 4?
No, Contract 4 is really small.
Not Yarmouth Port, but?
No, no. Contract 4 is just that small, let me go back to it. Little blue area. It's really small.
Ah, okay.
My, it's that small, it's just it was, it was meant to line up with the MAST DOT project that's happening there. But they were delayed, so we needed to move ahead and continue our, with our project. So the sewer's going in before the MAST DOT project. And then the, we are going to do the water main, but it's going to be with the MAST DOT project.
That's the Bass River Bridge project, and includes that intersection as well.
Oh, okay. I have a question about an area of town that has a lot of trouble with flooding, Captain's Village. Is it possible that with the sewer system, collectors could remove that excessive runoff rainwater that people have to drive through? And I'm asking two engineers, because I don't actually know what's possible.
Sure. The, the short answer is it couldn't, it could not be part of the sewer project itself. We have a separated system. It's just sanitary sewer. There are some older, larger, I guess you could say grandfathered cities where they do have a stormwater sewer combined system. But those aren't allowed anymore. There's huge overflows that happen when it rains heavily. And those are going to be your older cities like New Bedford, Fall River, you know, things like that. New systems like ours are not allowed to combine with stormwater. But with that said, there will be some opportunities as we impact roadways that will look. But with that said, there will be some opportunities as we impact roadways that we'll look at drainage infrastructure as well. We're doing that in a couple of areas, just like with the water. If we know we're going to be digging up a road for sewer, we'll see if we can do water or other utilities at the same time, if it makes sense. So particularly for Captain's Village, I think there's going to be some opportunities for stormwater improvements, but it will be a separate system that can be done at a similar time as that wastewater project when that happens.
So really, it would almost be like a byproduct of all the digging up to have better drainage around the pipes that are laid down? But it's not any part of the sewer system or the water system? Am I misunderstanding? Sorry.
Well, it wouldn't be part of the sewer piping manhole system you just saw in the picture there. But there is separate infrastructure that can be added at the same time, potentially with the same contractor, just like we're doing contracts two and three. Those selected contractors are doing water, and they're doing wastewater. Separate systems, but they're kind of doing them under the same contract. We could do three when it gets to areas that need significant improvement like Captain's Village. There could be a water component, there could be a wastewater component, and there could be a stormwater component. But there would be separate infrastructure, if you will. The state DEP does not allow us to kind of interconnect those systems. Those are all, have to be dedicated systems.
Okay. And what contract number does that fall under?
That's a good question. We don't have the overall eight-phase map, but it's not in.
I think it's phase four or five.
Yeah, it's not two or three. It would be after that. Two or three are kind of the more easy connections off of what you're seeing here. Maybe the more of the Lewis Bay, south of 28, heading north are kind of the later stages of the phased plan. Now, we do need to revisit some of those phases in order to meet the DEP nitrogen removal targets, so we'll be revisiting that and talking with the board about updating those phases. But the Captain's Village is in the later phases, probably more like four.
Okay, thank you.
So our last part is just about wastewater communications. As I mentioned before, we work closely with the police department to coordinate the detours, and they are very good about getting, they make the detour maps and share them on all the social media, which seems to go well. They have a lot of followers, so that's good. And we are in frequent communication with the Chamber of Commerce. Mary Vilbon and I speak frequently, and probably with Jeff, too. And we send them the weekly updates for the lookaheads for the work, and she sends them out to her constituents. So that's hopefully keeping, people who don't want to have to check the website, that it's coming into their inbox if they're members of the chamber. So that's helpful as well. And they help put up the signs on the bridge, on the, I always get my, Parkers River Bridge.
The wastewater campaign signs, yep.
And as I mentioned before, Waze is updated daily with which roads are closed and where. And if anyone would like to connect, for detours, follow the Town of Yarmouth or the Yarmouth Police on social media. That way, you'll get the most, the latest detour information. But you can always go to Waze for what's closed on any given day. And then, if you just want more general information, our website has the weekly construction lookaheads. So for right now, it's just contracts two and three, but eventually, everything else will be added as they come onboard. Any plans for where the main is going, you can look for them there, as well as, there's a whole page about resident information as far as what to do when it's time to connect. And that will be added to as we get closer to when people can actually connect. I think that's all I have.
Yeah, I think that's it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think you were here during public statements, and you heard some of the frustrating comments. And they're not new. They're, you know, we've heard them before. I'd like to put out there for some thought, we don't have to address this tonight, but I would really like folks to think about other measures that we can do to improve communications and the flow of information about the project, and particularly traffic. One of my fellow board members talked about a phone number. When we were having meetings, Dennis, Yarmouth, and Harwich, the towns were told of the Town of Harwich when they were doing wastewater construction. They had a designated person, a name, and they had, they were the wastewater ombudsman. And this person was a very visible figurehead in the community. Their phone number was easily accessible, and there was just someone that people knew they could call if they had a question about what was happening with the project on any given day. Their job was totally communications and communicating with residents. And the Harwich Select Board members that were part of our DHY sort of working group, the Harwich Select, what's that?
I was remembering the DHY days.
Well, the working group did a great job, I thought. And one of the suggestions that came up from the Harwich Select Board, they said they had a great experience in having someone designated as a wastewater coordinator or, you know, ombudsman. And that was a term that they used in Harwich. And they said at our meetings that this person became an incredibly important figurehead and was crucial in terms of sustaining public support. I'm not suggesting that you folks aren't putting in the effort, but I do think the absence of having a phone number and an individual whose job it is at the top of their list, on their job description, it's this, I think is something that really needs to be considered. I'd really like to, you know, I'll put that for the board to, you know, chime in on because I honestly think we're at a point, I don't want to say a breaking point, but we're at a point where there are just so many dimensions and so many aspects to this project, and there's so much misinformation that I think having someone that people can call and talk to, because there are many folks, this back and forth, I know for some people, it's driving them crazy. And I know it's the nature of the work, but there are aspects of the project that many people find frustrating. And we've got to figure out a better, you know, we shouldn't, I don't say rest on our laurels because that's not really what I mean, but in the absence of a better phrase, I think we need to keep striving to find ways to make things better and find better ways to communicate and get word out to folks. I see your videos, I see the Waze, I see stuff, but then, you know, I will literally go along Route 28, and I will see businesses with like no traffic. And I know that normally during this time of day, there will be activity, there should be activity. But for whatever reason, cars aren't being directed or people just aren't there. So there's no question what we're doing is having clearly an impact on a lot of people. And I just think we have to keep coming, keep looking at what can we do better? We should always be trying to find a way to strive to do something better. So my pitch for tonight, my suggestion is going to be, we all give some thought to having a wastewater ombudsman with a phone number, very accessible on the website, on all the stuff, everything that we put out. It's on the signboards. A person that people, they know they can call. I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm critical of you because you folks are always very accessible, but I think someone needs to, we just need to brand that name and have it a face and have a voice and have someone that can also play a role in helping address some of the complicated questions that people may have with respect to tie-ups, tie-ins, and hookups, and where I can get funding and stuff like that. There just needs to be a person that people can sort of connect with and talk to and get that information. Now, I asked the Harwich Select Board when they were, when they set this position up, I asked how many hours a week, it's, there may be times where it's a full-time job, but on average, they said that should be a 15- to 20-hour-a-week job. But you could get calls, and I know the coordinator that they had, or the ombudsman that they had, was available on weekends. He took calls anytime and sometimes would meet with people, go to their house, sit down with them, talk to them. They were confused about something, make sure that they got the information that they needed. So I think that's something that we need to really think long and hard about, but soon, we need to pull the trigger on this, either, you know, go or no-go on it very, very soon. Because, you know, it's, I just don't see it, I'm just very worried about, you know, the next several months and what's going on and more and more frustrations on the project. So I'm not going to ask you to respond to that. I'd be very interested, at least initially, in hearing what my other fellow board members think, but we've got to do something.
Well, I do have a very brief response, and it might not fully answer your question, but we just recently had an assistant wastewater superintendent start. So he's obviously got a learning curve associated with that, but meeting with residents is one of the key things we've targeted him with. It's been mostly on stub locations and more of the fine-tune, you know, construction issues, you know, dealing with, you know, problems and trying to overcome those issues. So I don't know if it completely addresses that ombudsman position that might be more higher-profile, but we do have additional resources within the DPW that hopefully will help us to make some improvements as we move on.
Well, then, if you have this individual, may I? If you have this individual, at least for the public at large, let's think about designating that individual as the wastewater ombudsman. Let's have that individual's name out there on our posters, our mailings, our communications. Have a question, call our ombudsman, put his name out there. What's that?
On the post office wall.
Exactly. On the post office wall, on the chamber wall, you name it, whatever wall that's out, you know, as many walls as we can find. But I think we need to connect this to a person. People want to talk to people. People want to know that they're talking to someone that's in the know, that's in a position of authority of some sort that they can connect with. And I think, I think we've gone long enough without that. I think now is the time to really pull the trigger on it. So I would make, I would consider, I don't know, again, what the union rules are or what the job description says, but, you know, we may just want to just dub that person for the time being, you know, wastewater ombudsman and have, I mean, you want to learn on the job. There's no better way to learn on the job than to become the ombudsman for something like this and handle all the, you know, phone calls.
Absolutely.
So I would urge you to give some thought to that.
Okay. Any further questions, Liz?
I would, building off of Mark's idea, I think it's great, and I agree that that would be a major addition. And I'm not, I don't know the person you just hired, but I do think it's going to require a certain kind of person. I'm not sure that somebody who's an engineer, never mind, I don't know who, but.
We have eloquent engineers.
Yes, but I think it's, you're wasting somebody who's very talented in other areas if that's who you have as the ombudsman. The ombudsman that I would envision has to be very touchy-feely, able to respond to people in a very caring way and spend the time on the phone talking to them when maybe somebody else would feel, gee, I'm really supposed to be over here doing this job. So I would question pushing that onto a assistant superintendent. But I do think that that's a really great idea, and I think it could also help with PR in that it could be, another announcement, or however it should be handled, that this is being implemented. We hear you, here's something additional that we're bringing forward to try to help. Could be another good town move.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I think the idea of a central person is very smart. And I would certainly, if we needed more money to do that for next year's budget, I would certainly support that.
Well, certainly, the timing of this is coming along with our budget workshop starting up in January, so, but I think what you're coming across from the board, because I also support the idea of a budget ombudsman, I've seen how well that works in healthcare. And certainly, a lot of times, it's just having that personal touch, that person you can talk to can make all the difference in the world, so.
Yeah, because the person's there for the public. It's, you know, the person has a job to do for the town, but the person's, their job is to be the ombudsman for the average resident, citizen, person in town that is just plagued with questions and questions and uncertainty, or, you know, why isn't that service line going where it was supposed to go? Why the change? Just someone that also is connected to the town bureaucracy that knows how to get the answer and communicate effectively to the people that are working on things, so.
That person could even, beg your pardon, is it okay? Could even be available for presentations to the Rotary, to the Yarmouth Chamber of Commerce, and the senior center. Where are we? What's going on? That could be, a person goes out and, at 1:00, there'll be a presentation by.
But I think the priority is, you know.
I agree.
I beg to differ a little bit. The priority has to be the Yarmouth resident and taxpayer, the people that here live in this community, that are residents, that are impacted by this. That should be their number-one priority. This person is there for them.
Yeah.
All right? You have questions, call me. You don't know anything, call me. You want to know if you can get the Stop &amp; Shop tomorrow, call me. You want to go shopping, you got to do the laundry, whatever, call me. Just, you need, it's, for some folks, going on a, you know, this is easy for us, right? Going on a mobile phone and looking at Waze, but there are lots of folks that that is just.
Torture.
Really, you're just, you're killing them, right? I mean, I know of a half a dozen people, I can rattle off right off the bat where I say that, that's not going to mean anything. It's just a complete waste of time. So we have, folks are very different. Some are very good at technology, a lot of folks aren't. And I think we, the phone is something that most people are pretty used to. So I think we should just be focused on, you know, that kind of communication, or even in person, you know? Someone, you know, come to my house, I want to show you something. They should be very visible, very mobile out in the community. And to some degree, my hope is, is they ease your burden a bit, all right? Because, I mean, I can't tell you how many times I've called Jeff to say, I've got an angry constituent, this is what they're asking me, and can you go talk to them? I mean, I've been bugging him on a pretty regular basis, and you've been great. You've been incredibly responsive, but I think now's the time to think about, you know, maybe some reinforcements in a different focus and a different approach, you know? So, and again, I'm not coming down critical. I just think that, given the dimensions of the project and given what's going on, I think this kind of, this kind of move, I think, we really need to take seriously.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
And we know you're early-morning people, so double thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on, we have board and committee actions, approval of the minutes for the December 9th, 2024 meeting.
I had a comment on the minutes. One, I think they're, so I would have liked, in number one, item one, to have let people know where I was going. It says for another meeting, and I'd rather that they didn't think I'm going to Alcoholics Anonymous, although I could have been.
Bridge Club.
Yeah.
Bowling.
So you want to make a change to the minutes that reads that to?
For a meeting with Old Kings Highway, scheduled meeting with Old Kings Highway.
Okay. Any other revisions?
Madam Chair, I move the approval of the minutes for December 9th, 2024, as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's approved. Moving on, we have the upcoming agenda review. Our next meeting is going to be next year. It's the time of year when we can say that. We have the items that we have listed. We have the budget workshop, capital improvement presentation, the Maticeke's utilization committee update, and review of the final draft of the Station Avenue corridor study report.
I was thinking that when we met previously, we moved a couple of items onto this agenda, but maybe it's too crowded. We had thought that the communications update was rather important, and that it would be nice to have that soon, but maybe it was supposed to be on a different night. Does that ring any bells?
You're talking about the communications update just from?
It may have been moved to the 14th. It was on my sheet.
Yeah.
So we do have an upcoming communications update. January 7 may be very busy. We had to move the CIP to go along with the budget workshop. It may work out better that we do on January 14, put that communications update on.
Good.
Let me just stop there for a moment before we start talking about January 14 and say, we've. say, we've got January 14th and we have January 21st. Not meeting on January 21st because of the Martin Luther King holiday. How does the board feel that, about meeting, instead of having back-to-back meetings at the beginning of November and then no meeting until...
I mean, January?
I'm sorry, January, and then no meetings until February? What would the board think of having our meetings be January 7th and January 21st?
It's fine with me. That would be fine with me also.
January 7th and 21st, is that what you're suggesting? Oh, so the Tuesday after the holiday?
Right.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
That's fine.
I think it spaces it out better in the month, you know, in case things are coming up.
Yeah. I just want everybody to understand, there's been this tradition with the board for years that the Tuesday after a long weekend is typically not a date to schedule a select board meeting. That's been the custom. It's been largely set up that way for people to make plans for family vacations and trips and other business and stuff like that, so. But I'm okay if we take these up, you know, on a case-by-case basis. That's fine with me.
Okay. So our meetings then in January will be on January 7th and January 21st. Okay, going back, sorry, Bob, to communications update then we'd be talking about on January 21st?
Yes.
Budget workshop, of course, is going to be something that's a continuing item for every single agenda up until it's finally approved.
And I think we also had a Route 28 update.
Oh, Mass DOT, do we have them coming down to talk or zooming in?
No, I think what we're looking for is to get an update on what their plans are. If they can come, that's great. But don't we have, I think we have the improvements to Route 28 under design, and it keeps getting pushed off on the transportation improvement program. So I think what we're anxious to do is make sure that that project keeps pace and keeps moving forward.
Is it my understanding that the state is kind of delaying on making a presentation to us?
I don't know. I don't know what the delay is. All I know is that the sooner we can get the design work done, the faster we'll fund it. I represent, I'm on the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, which is the regional organization that creates the tip and approves the tip. And this project just keeps getting bounced further and further out. Now, obviously, there's a lot going on in the wastewater front, of course, but I think getting regular updates on what's happening with that project is in order. And it could come, you know, either from DPW or from the town administrator. I just think that we just, we can't lose track of that project. It's so critical. It's a lot of money. I think it's, what is it, $38 million, something, 30s? It's a pretty expensive project. And in order to keep things moving, you know, some communities are actually putting their own design money, their own money on the table, like we've been talking about for Route 6A, you know, putting our own money on the table to advance the design work there so it can get further up in the priority. I mean, you know, at some point, we may have to consider doing that. I know the administrator and staff would prefer not to, but, I mean, that project keeps getting put off because of its, it's so expensive.
So let's get that update on. Maybe we can tentatively put it on for January 21. If we can get the DOT down here to give us an update, that'd be the best.
Yeah.
See if we can do that.
Yeah. I know that can be difficult, but it's worth trying.
I would love to add the update on the second round of grants from green communities to the 21st.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And what I can do is, Bob and I can get together and take a look also at some of these items that we need to check off, that we haven't addressed yet in our pending.
Yep.
And see about putting some of those on the agenda, too.
Great.
But as I say, budget workshop will definitely be something we're going to be discussing each and every meeting at this point up until it's finalized. Okay. I don't think it's wise for us to go any further out than January.
I would agree.
I would just also add on the 7th, I know that, it says it on the list, when we talk about Station Avenue and the Station Avenue corridor, to also bring in the possible Station Avenue Elementary School as just part of a possible possibility, a possible possibility.
And we did, if you recall, we had that discussion, and then I immediately went to the Cape Cod Commission folks, and, you know, they had done a lot of their work, but asked them specifically to cover the educational issues there. And so we'll ask them to highlight any information that they were able to put together.
You're talking about educational transportation along the corridor?
Yeah, and, you know, congestion associated with the schools.
We had, our police chief was here saying predominantly, everybody in town is down in that area or on school.
Yeah, but I want to refresh everyone's memory. We've got a feasibility study that we've been talking about, and we've been told by the schools and by Bob that in the discussions with the state, they have a, I don't want to say a hidden agenda, but they have an agenda, and that is for us to be looking at supersizing the Station Ave school. Now, when the superintendent came here originally, he thought having a school in West Yarmouth made sense. And then we, as a board, have talked about at least taking a good, hard look at some of the existing facilities, like the Lawrence MacArthur School, right? So I think it's important for us, the more we better understand the traffic impacts...
And the safety.
The safety issues on Station Ave.
Yeah.
I think the more we can be better informed in communicating to the state any reservations that we might have about that option, because that seems to be their preferred option, is for a new school to be folded into a revamped Station Ave school. So this is what we're being told. And I think to some degree, if there's an issue there, even further complicating traffic on Station Ave, then we need, we want to be as clear as we can to the state that that option has some downsides.
Mark, do you remember when the Station Ave Elementary School was built?
Yep.
Are you going to tell us?
25 years ago.
Twenty, yeah, 20...
25, 25 years ago?
Years ago, yeah. Suzanne McCollum.
Thank you, that's a help. I mean, because it looks new, but...
It is new. Twenty, in years, in years...
That's the new school.
In school years, that's new. That's a baby.
Before we built the middle school, that was the new school.
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, but the states, there are, when they, in their discussions with, you know, Bob and with the superintendent, they were pretty open in thinking that doing one big school, now, when I was a kid, schools were neighborhood schools. The idea was to walk, you walked to your kindergarten and first grade and second grade, right? Think of all the kids in Yarmouth that, you know, went to elementary school and could walk to their school. You know, the idea of making the elementary school almost something like its own version of high school, where everybody gets bussed to it, just, there's something, there's something wrong with it. Again, we also, I think, I had the occasion to bump into State Senator Julian Seer the other day, and he was emphasizing his strong interest and support for getting this going. He also mentioned that, given the makeup and the demographics of our school population, that we may qualify for a higher percentage of reimbursement from state aid on that school. He said that a new school, we may qualify...
That would be great.
...for 70% funding on it. So I mention that because that's just an important piece of information that he shared. And that's literally all he talked about, was making sure that he was kept in the loop on the studies and how things are going, so that he could continue to advocate for us to get a higher allocation. He thought that our demographics were such. Now, here's another factor to keep in mind, and I don't want to bog this down, because I know this is all future agenda stuff, but another factor worth checking into is West Yarmouth, portions of West Yarmouth have been designated as an economic justice area, and that may argue for keeping West Yarmouth in mind for a location, because when you go through the MEPA process, when you go through the environmental permitting and review process, the state is taking a hard look at ways to improve or not disadvantage any further these areas. So that could be a factor in all of this as well. From a regulatory point of view, the state has, is sort of still in the process of figuring out how, when you do a regulatory review, the things to look for, the criteria and factors to consider in making regulatory decisions in economic justice areas. But we shouldn't wait for that to all get completely, I guess what I'm saying is, I'm just flagging it, because it could be a factor that will influence the selection process as well. So enough said on that.
Going back to the review of the final draft of Station Avenue corridor study, doesn't that include the traffic patterns that are caused by the schools along Station Avenue?
It does. But when they did this...
Is that answering what you were asking?
But when they did the study, they weren't looking at the new, the another...
For another new school.
Right, the replacement for the Marguerite Small School.
I wonder if they could at least show us the difference in the tra, I wonder if there is any information on the difference in the traffic patterns along Station Avenue pre-DYIMS and post-DYIMS? Because that, just installing that one school has certainly made a big difference.
Right. Well, that's the reason why we want them in here. Plus, we may not want them to leave. We may, we may want to keep this study open-ended a bit until we get more answers.
Okay, moving on from upcoming agenda review individual items. Mike, Mark? Excuse me, sorry.
I want to thank, you know, Mr. Singer and the folks from Colbea for being here tonight and taking my abuse yet again. And I also want to commend the town administrator for being frank with them and upfront that, you know, we've had certain expectations, given what was presented, and I don't think they should be surprised by any of it. But I do appreciate them coming in and talking to us tonight. The other thing is, there was a comment made during the public comments section about discussions that board members have, you know, maybe, you know, before a meeting begins. And I just want to reassure anybody that might be watching that, you know, we're not engaged in anything nefarious. It may be very simple stuff about what does this mean on the agenda, or, you know, what time, didn't we already discuss this? I mean, there's not a lot of deliberation that goes on when we recess or before a meeting goes on. So for anybody that thinks that there might be something exciting and suspenseful and something nefarious going on, I, there certainly wasn't happening tonight, and it rarely, if ever does, so. I just had to get that out there, because I was trying to think about, because I was meant, my name was mentioned, someone was, someone on the board was talking to me, and it was sort of like, I think the question that we were discussing is, wasn't this, didn't we already agree to have this on the agenda? That's a, that's not, we're not deliberating on matters of state or any big issues. We're trying to get some clarity on what's on the agenda or what might not be on the agenda. So I just want to reassure Mr. Glenn and others that are concerned about this, that sometimes we just, we might have brief conversations just to make sure that we're clear on what we're going to be deliberating on in the evening, not necessarily the substance of it or whatever, but it's just basically procedural stuff, so.
Procedural.
I think it's important for everyone out there to know that we're here representing you, and we certainly are not forgetting that. And we do take our jobs seriously. So certainly, if you have comments for us, feel free to send them in, but we are doing the best we can. We are only human. Joyce?
I think I'm set. I look forward to these January agendas. I just want to mention that I'm going to be coming in by Zoom on January 7th.
Okay.
So I want to give you a heads up.
Okay. Liz?
I, yes, I'm the guilty party for being the newbie and having to get information from my fellow board members and from my town administrator. Very much not a, anything other than, where does my pen go and how do I turn the page over here? So, and I want to point out to the people who are irate with me, I serve. I'm here serving, and I have no agenda, I have no prejudice against any individual. I am trying to support the laws that are written, and I'm very grateful to have the town administrator and the town lawyers helping me in doing that. So this is not an action by a select person who has an agenda. I'm here serving the people who are both electing me and not electing me. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the town administrator items, we have the consent agenda. We have the plank donations as part of that. Do I have a motion to accept the, to move the consent agenda?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, town administrator updates.
Thank you very much. Couple of items I wanted to mention is, first of all, I did attend the school building administration meeting, Massachusetts School Building Administration, last Friday, and they invited the town, this was the entire SBA for their program, they adopted their communities that they're accepting into the program for the upcoming year, and they have made an invitation, they voted to invite the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District to participate in the SBA program with the initiation of a feasibility study. So I was very happy to see that. That follows up with the actions that the board took in discussions with the school system. We have a lot of challenges, but I think as select board member Forrest pointed out, if there's a possibility, the numbers that we're talking about are huge of maybe leveraging up to 70% state funding for a new school. It's very critical that we participate and participate strongly, and it's going to take a lot of leadership to make sure that we're close with the educational leaders in our community, and that when we communicate with the state, we do it as Yarmouth. And so I think that's really good news, and we're going to see the next steps. There will be a request to, you know, have funds to do the feasibility study. We're going to be talking about the scope of that, and so we're going to ramp up that, and we'll have that on some future agendas. But that was a watershed meeting last Friday, and it was quite an interesting process. We had maybe over 200 people on that meeting, and I think it's hard managing a Zoom. It took 20 minutes just to go down the list of everyone disclosing who's recording the meeting. And, but it was fascinating. I want to also tell you, our budget process continues. At the point in the budget process, we're no longer at the start. I have met with every single department. We've spent hours and hours and hours, and we don't short-circuit it. We did, for instance, the DPW one day, you know, last week, and it was almost an all-day affair, the amount of divisions that are involved there. And we're in the process now of refining the revenue, looking at each individual proposal, and we are on schedule, working very closely with our finance department. Jen Moen, the finance director, we've talked about her role this year in the budget process has really been ramped up, so it's highly collaborative, and we've got the whole financial team along with me, and we're evaluating all of the different costs, and we are on schedule to have a budget recommendation by the first of the year. And when we have on January 7th, the budget workshop, I think it'll be a very meaningful experience for everyone, and that'll be a good kickoff. So things are moving forward, and we're spending a lot of time with the budget. I think this is kind of funny if I manage to bring it. The, I went to the Cape Cod Municipal Managers Association meeting last week, and I had a copy of it, I might have left it in my folder upstairs. But you'll be happy to know that the town of Yarmouth has been awarded the Wastewater Road Construction of the Year Award. Road Construction of the Year Award for Cape Cod for 2024.
You mean, being the most disruptive, is that?
Here we go. I'll pass this around. This is, this is our award. And I was happy to see us finally.
Road construction.
We finally knocked off the town of Barnstable, who had garnered that award for the previous two years and had led the show, and it's nice to receive that recognition from our peers throughout Cape Cod, and I got a kick out of that.
Who's road construction?
So we beat out Barnstable.
We have been busy.
Nice.
And, and that's an actual award we received. I want to wish everyone the best holiday wishes. Next week is Christmas week. I wanted to let you know, I'll be out next week because my family is going to be traveling to the Midwest for Christmas, but just for that week, and then I'll be back in the week between Christmas and, and New Year's. And I wanted to mention on Friday that we have scheduled in this room for our staff, we generally have a holiday potluck lunch, and I'd like to invite board members around, you know, noon time, so stop by and say hi.
Friday?
It'll be this Friday, and we're also looking for snippets. Just got too busy tonight with all of our executive session, but we have Santa hats that we're looking to have our select board members don and give us just a brief holiday wish as part of the Communication Department's outreach in the community. And I think we'll have some fun with that, but if you do stop by, we'll make sure that we get just a quick little video of saying, saying hi to the staff and everything, so that'll be great.
Do we bring food?
You don't need to. It's kind of a potluck that, you know, we're going to, we always have so much food.
Okay.
Just if you get a chance to stop by and say hi to folks.
Noonish, you said?
Yes. This Friday, and that is what, the 20th? And that's all I have for this evening.
I would like to extend a happy holidays wish to all the folks living here in town and to all the wonderful and dedicated people that we have working for us as actual town employees. And we'll be seeing you next year. And at this point, I will introduce a motion to adjourn.
It's almost.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everyone. We'll see you next.